Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting and Tentative Budget and CIP Adoption, meeting on Tuesday, June 13, 2023, at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Stephanie Lueiras with Christ Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu, Ricardo De Anda.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for another beautiful day in Lake Havasu. And I just ask that as we gather together this evening, that we would have ears to hear and really listen to one another, the wisdom to understand one another, and a spirit of unity and collaboration to come together as a community, not one against another, but to come together and truly build a community that we are proud of, that will continue on into the future as something to be proud of. Please give our leaders the wisdom that they need to govern and to lead, be with our first responders, our military, and those that watch over us each and every day. And we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. De Anda from YADA. Thank you for being here this evening. If you'd like to share a little bit about your organization.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us. So my name is Ricardo De Anda. This is Lindsay Hagerty. We're from the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu, also known as YADA for short, because that is a mouthful to say all at once. We had to abbreviate it a little. So what YADA is, is a community coalition, and we focus on substance abuse prevention for youth. We do an array of different things. So we have a lot of different programming and services that we can offer the youth, but also families and adults and community members. We also host a couple of events each year that raise awareness on substance abuse, and I'm going to let Lindsay talk about that.
Our two events over the year are, our first one coming up is our Walk Away From Drugs. That's held during Red Ribbon Week. The date we have for that this year is October 26. Our location is to be determined. We'll have flyers out with location specifics. And then our next one is our Hobbies Not Habits. That's an event for all ages. We invite organizations and the community to come showcase new interests and promote healthy hobbies instead of unhealthy habits for our youth. Lunch and activities are provided. It's for all of our community. It's a free family day, and that date is April 27. So we hope to see you guys all there.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do for our community. The next item on the agenda is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Cameron Moses, here. Jenny Koch, here. Jim Dolan. Vice Mayor David Lane, here. Mayor Kal Sheehy, here. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is our Fiscal Year 2022/23 Second and Third Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Chief Sterling provided these in our packets for our review. Are there any questions from members of the council? All right, they will be filed as such, and they're available on our website for anyone to review. Item 6.2 is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several current and upcoming vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, four pilot and one non-pilot regular members, and one pilot and one non-pilot alternate members. Board of Adjustment, two regular members and two alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member, one student member. Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member, one alternate member. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. The deadline to submit applications for these upcoming and current vacancies was Friday, May 26, by 5:00 PM. However, the City Clerk's Office is continuing to accept applications for future vacancies on the Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Item 6.3 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Lots to cover, but I know we have a lengthy meeting, so I will roll right through it. Very proud of this, with very good news. I am happy to report that the Runway Rehabilitation Project at our airport is now completed, and it was done three days ahead of schedule. So thank you to Paul Blazer, our airport manager, Greg Frosty, our Public Works Director, and all the project management team for all their efforts. The air traffic actually opened up at 11:42 AM just last Friday morning, and the first aircraft landed at 11:44. Do you think they were waiting for it? Thanks to the leadership of Mike Keen, our Parks Director, and the grants that were received by the city. The initial phase of our Sarah Park Trail Sign Project is underway. A set of information and warning signs have been added to the second parking lot. Some confidence markers are added along a few of the trails, and a start of the trail signs have been added for the start of some of the trails. The project is ongoing, and there are many miles of trails at Sarah Park. And again, as a reminder, this was funded through a grant from the Arizona State Parks and Trails Grant. We have hikers that go out there, especially in the summer months. A lot of our tourists come in. We had a death, fatality here, I think, two years ago in the summer months. Lots of search and rescues that take place. So hopefully, these trails are going to let people know where they're at, how far away from the parking lot they're at, and remind them that is essential to stay hydrated out there. Mayor, you and Vice Mayor David Lane presented Cody Grease with a proclamation naming the Day Cody Grease Day in Lake Havasu City in honor of his Eagle Scout honor and graduation from Lake Havasu High School. In order to achieve this prestigious honor, Cody completed his Eagle project by planning and constructing a gaga ball pit for families to enjoy next to the Island Ball Field. Congratulations to you, Cody. Mayor, you presented a certificate to a young curator of Havasu, Jamison Darling, for her unique and heartfelt tribute to her great-grandmother, displayed at the Lake Havasu Museum. Mayor, you and Vice Mayor Lane and Councilmember Campbell joined the community members at the Memorial Day Ceremony to honor the sacrifices made by our nation's finest, so that their memories are never forgotten. Mayor, you threw out the first pitch at the Havasu Heat's Opening Day Ceremony at Lake Havasu High School. I think you registered a fastball at 101 miles an hour. Mayor, you presented the annual proclamation at the Cancer Survivors' Day Breakfast to the Cancer Association of Havasu, which provides programs including low-cost, early-detection screenings, and public education and support groups for cancer survivors throughout our community. What a great bunch. Vice Mayor Lane, you attended the Little League Closing Ceremony in celebration to help end the season. Vice Mayor Lane, you attended the Vietnam Pinning Ceremony at the Breakwater Grill. There were 35 Vietnam veterans that were present at this event. They were all welcomed home and honored for their service in the U.S. military between November 1955 and May 15, 1975. Thank you to Erica Connor Sims at Today's News Herald for the picture. Mayor, you and Councilmember Nancy Campbell joined Chief Troy Sterling and Chief Pete Palofas at the Elks Lodge for the Flag Day Celebration in honor of the upcoming Flag Day, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, June 14. And it's bittersweet that we say goodbye and congratulations to our Maria Hart. Maria retired from Lake Havasu City Development Services Department just last Friday after 23 years of service with Lake Havasu City. Maria was hired in October of 2000 as an admin tech in the Finance Department. In 2003, she moved to the Development Services Department, where she served in different capacities as an admin specialist, a customer service specialist, admin specialist I, and then the admin specialist II, where then she retired in that position. Congratulations to you, Maria. We wish you the best of luck on a happy retirement, and I know I'll miss your warm smile, your dedication to our team, and all you did for the residents of Lake Havasu City. And then on a final note, we've had a lot of questions come up about what's happening underneath the bridge. Work started on the concrete work that's done at that location, and with a separate but coordinated effort, and the private property that's adjacent to the city property under the bridge. If you've been under the bridge lately, you've seen cracks in the concrete, and whether tripping hazards, or it just looks like it needs to be taken care of. So it's been a significant problem. The concrete is now being removed by our Public Works crews, so kudos to Bill Young and his team for all the work they're doing there. Crews are going to work hard to ensure the project is completed before the Fourth of July. In the meantime, measures are in place to ensure that there is pedestrian access throughout the construction period, and we want to thank the public for their patience and look forward to a completed project in the end that we can all be proud of. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. When we open each item for discussion during the public hearing, we ask that you make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. There's a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up. And also, just be sure when you're addressing, if you are addressing during the public hearings, that you are addressing it directly to the City Council. With that, we'll start with item 7.1, which is Approve City Attorney Employment Contract with Kelly Gary, Dr. Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you today with three contracts. The first we're going to start with is to approve the City Attorney Employment Contract with Kelly Gary. The terms of Ms. Gary's contract on her job responsibilities are stated in the code, and then her evaluation is conducted based on whether she's meeting those requirements. The council did give her a satisfactory rating on her performance appraisal and determined that they wished to renew her code or renew her contract. Ms. Gary's been here since December of 2011, and the contract terms commence as of June 24 of 2023, and the requirements for that contract are determined based on a market analysis and the distance from a market rate that we would have for anyone else serving in that position with our market cities. The market cities are also determined by code, so that's what we use to determine what the wage recommendation should be. The motion before you today is to approve the contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Dr. Hamilton? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Dinah Lutz. Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and Councilmembers. I'm speaking today about observations and concerns regarding policies of Lake Havasu City Council and the city attorney. On July 1, 2020, Mayor Sheehy issued an emergency proclamation, 2020-2, requiring face coverings at all public places, accommodation, and response to the COVID-19 virus. This mandate was a clear violation of the citizens of Lake Havasu's constitutional rights, and how Ms. Gary did nothing to protect our rights. She missed a second opportunity to intervene in support of the Constitution when the mayor extended the mask mandate on August 28, 2020. And, Mr. Mayor, did she protect you by advising you that you were in violation of the Constitution? And during the COVID mask mandate, it seems that the city manager, Jess Knudsen, was exercising his constitutional rights not to wear a mask in a public place by taking pictures in the mayor's office, as shown as in online video. I wonder what Ms. Gary had to say in executive session? Clearly not much. In corporate America, this behavior would not be tolerated, as managers and executives are held to a higher standard. In December of 2022, when the community was outraged at a family-friendly drag show that included children under 18 was going to take place, the community wanted action from this very city council. Ms. Gary stepped in to protect the rights of the drag show, stating that the cabaret code was unconstitutional, is unconstitutional. However, she failed to protect the rights of all citizens during COVID. In March of this year, when the city council moved to silence Councilmembers Campbell and Lynn, Ms. Gary initially stated that no direction was given on how council members request items for further research. However, later appeared to have colluded with other city council members by having a pre-prepared motion to vote prior to any council discussion. Ms. Gary failed to defend the rights of two council members who were voted in by the people of this community. Ms. Gary has chosen to use the Constitution to protect special interest groups and not to protect the children or the people of Lake Havasu. The woke ideology to control a fearful population and silence free speech and conservative representation has no place in Lake Havasu City. The Constitution was adopted out of a period of extreme government control and meant to return the power to the people. It is the highest law of the land, and there are no provisions that alters it, not even a pandemic. Ms. Gary's primary functions are to provide sound legal advice and representation for the city, which she has failed on numerous occasions. Lake Havasu City needs an attorney who applies Constitution first and foremost in all matters. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker? Please state your name for the record.
Gregory Logan. I just have two questions for Ms. Hamilton here. Who did the actual study on this, on the fiscal responsibility or the wage guarantees?
Sir, I did, and my staff helped me.
Yeah, and for the record, that was Dr. Hamilton did the analysis along with her team and HR.
Okay. Can you name the other people in the HR department, and why wasn't this an open discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Logan, ask your questions to us, and then we'll direct them to where they're at. So what was your second question?
The second question was, well, actually, you've answered the first question. I just want to know who did the thing? And it was, was it, my second question was going to be, was it a local agency? You've answered those questions. I disagree with your analysis, but hey.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve the City Council contract commencing June 24, 2023 until terminated with Kelly Gary.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and we have a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 7.2, which is Approve City Manager Employment Contract with Jess Knudsen, Dr. Hamilton.
Mayor and Council, the next contract that I bring before you is a request to approve the City Manager Employment Contract with Jess Knudsen, commencing on January 24, 2023. Sorry about that. Just as a point of clarification, the cities that we use for the market study are prescribed by code, and so those are the places that we contact to get our comparable market data that we use in making the determination of the recommendations. The city manager is the chief administrative officer of the city, has a job description that is also prescribed by code, and his evaluation was approved as satisfactory. So to that end, we recommend that the council consider approving Mr. Knudsen's contract beginning January 20, or, I'm having a great day, beginning June 24, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Dr. Hamilton for members of the council? Any comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ted Boyd. Wow, Jess.
Yeah, Mr. Boyd, you're going to address the council.
I am. Is any part of the council?
No. You elected seven members of the council.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's quite exorbitant. I decided to do a little deep diving and look at the cities around Lake Havasu and see what their city managers are making. Bullhead has a population of about 44,000 plus. According to public record, their city manager makes $192,000. Kingman, about 36,000 residents. According to public record, their city manager makes $176,000. Then I looked at Flagstaff. Flagstaff, a little bit more than us, 77,000 population. They pay their city manager $215,400. Then we have Little Sleepy Lake Havasu, 60,000-plus residents, hardly any infrastructure to any of the other cities that I compared them to, and he wants $217,425. So I decided to do a little researching on Jess himself. This is all public record, could be wrong. I apologize if I'm wrong. In 2019, Jess's salary was $151,110. Pretty good salary, I would say. The very next year, in 2020, he was given a $5,000 raise to $156,900. Bravo. Excellent. In 2021, that's when the big one happened, a raise of $29,000 to 185,900. But he didn't stop there. In 2022, it was another $10,000 to $195,000, and now in 2023, another $22,000 to $217,000, plus. Now, just this climate, financial climate in our country and in our county, we're looking at our Board of Supervisors. Their current year, they have a $4 million deficit. Next year is projected to be $18 million. Okay? Right now, if we give Jess this salary, it's 259% above the median average county or city salary. I think it's just too much. We can't afford it. We're redlining projects in the city right now and postponing much needed things. We have aging infrastructure in the city that needs to be taken care of. We can't afford to be top-heavy. I say, take that money and give it to the employees. I mean, we're having trouble keeping employees in the city and drawing new ones. Let's use that money to increase the salaries for employees and the people that live here in Lake Havasu. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Just for the record, your numbers are incorrect, but these are two-year contracts. There was no increase at all last year for these salaries at all, so. No, you could be wrong. I just want to make sure that those watching at home and those that are involved, that not all of the facts that you presented this evening are true. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Don Wisdom. Evening, Mayor and Council. Jess, the lady back here said you had a satisfactory report. With the increase you're getting, I would expect excellent. You don't have excellent.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yeah, again, there is some confusion here, so the code dictates what these positions do, and it's either they're doing it or they're not. That's where the word satisfactory comes from, or favorable. Yes.
Hello, Mayor and Council, David Diaz. I just want to get a question clarification of, I know they were two-year contracts in the past, and now they're going to go to life long until terminated. Can you give me the reasoning for that? That's all.
Certainly, yes. So the contract before were two-year terms, which seemed to work well. We would renegotiate a contract every two years. The contracts that we're considering this evening are no specific-term contracts for the city attorney and city manager. The reason for that is that the contract outlines the details. It puts in basically a payment program similar to all other city employees, but there are still provisions in the contract if it needed to terminate for any reason, or the job expectations were not being met, that we'd be able to address it. But we basically were doing a formality every two years to redo the same pieces on the paper. So this is also the most common kind of employment contract, and it's also used by the city managers that were mentioned earlier, Bullhead and Kingman, just in our neighborhood, among many others, but that was the reason. Yes. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I just want to get it on the record that I, too, am disappointed with endless contract. I like two-year contracts. I use those for negotiation tools on a regular basis. I don't like step increases. I like to work based on performances, and I don't feel that this is performance-based. This is just check the boxes and move it forward. I also feel that we did one of the largest debacles of all times, which is the water rate study to the community. And both of the, so for me, to give out raises at this point and endless contracts when we still are going into a budget session that we haven't even fixed the water rate study yet, and then we have red lines through a bunch of, infrastructure is extremely concerning. Personally, absolutely no problem with the personnel. I just don't like how this past year has been going, especially the water rate study. So it will be a no for me.
Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll address a few of the issues that have come up tonight and give my thoughts on what's happening here. So we've heard that the city manager and also the city attorney aren't following and have not followed the Constitution. I totally disagree with that. They have followed the Constitution of the United States, because the Constitution applies to everybody, whether you agree with them or you disagree with them. So they have done that. They've given us the best advice they can. When it comes to the fact that they receive favorable, we don't do it on a scale of extra good or extra bad. They either met the terms of their contract, or they didn't meet the terms of their contract. They met the terms of their contract. We're going to continue their contract if the vote passes. So what happens with this contract? We said that we were going to have a contract that's basically a perpetual contract instead of every two years. Every two years, the contract is essentially the same thing all the time. So instead of renewing that every two years and talking about it every two years and doing the same thing, saying, we're just going to continue on, we will just keep it going. But the terms of releasing them from their employment contract or terminating their employment is still the same, whether it's the perpetual contract or it's not. And as the mayor mentioned, this is the most common kind. When it comes to the pay, one of the things that the mayor and Dr. Hamilton said, this is set in code by what cities we use. We use the same cities for these three employees that we use for all the other full-time permanent employees that we have in the city. We said several years ago that we were going to bring all of our employees up to fair-market value based on the comparisons that are set in code, like we've done with all the employees. We've done that with all the employees. The last three employees we have are these three employees whose contracts come before us tonight. They will now be at fair-market value, and when you look at the way the contract is written, they will now receive, based on their annual evaluation, which they'll still receive an annual evaluation, the same things that the other city employees get. We are now bringing them up to where they should be based on the positions that they hold and based on our comparable cities. Exactly, you can say I'm just going blah, 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 but this is the facts of the case. And the facts are that we are now bringing them up exactly.
And the facts are that we are now bringing them up exactly where they're supposed to be. And they will now receive the same thing that the other employees done, and we have fulfilled our commitment. So that's where I stand on this issue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion from members of the council? Or will entertain a motion?
Mayor motion?
Please.
I move to approve the city manager contract commencing June 24, 2023, until terminated with Jessica Knutson.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is approve city magistrate employment contract with Mitchell Kalali. Dr. Kimbleton?
Mayor and Council, the final contract I bring before you today is a recommendation to approve the city magistrate employment contract with Mitchell Kalali. This is a two-year contract as prescribed by the courts. And so it will commence on June 24, 2023, and will go into effect for the proceeding or for the following two years. Again, the city magistrate's duties and responsibilities are outlined by city code, and we use the prescribed code market cities to determine a recommendation for the salary increase. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Kimbleton for members of the council? Any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please, yeah. One opportunity per item.
Well, I disagree with the comment debate about excellence and standard and okay. When you're comparing the city manager to the magistrate Judge Qualley, he is excellent.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Please.
Okay, since I can talk at two, this wasn't originally what I was going to ask him, but I got a question. Richard Morgan Brayden here in Lake Havasu. You made it sound like that you have to follow the guidelines. It wasn't you that determined the 11-point whatever percent increase. Do you have to follow those guidelines, or can you say, "Well, okay, we're not paying them enough, but we're not going to be able to afford to give them that much"? That's my question.
Sure. Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane, I made those comments if you would like to.
Since I made the comment, I'll make the answer. No, we're not saying that we are tied into doing that. What I'm saying is that we made the commitment several years ago to make sure all city employees are brought up to fair market value. That 11 and 1/2% that they're getting right now is those pay increases that the permanent full-time employees got this year and what they and their COLA increase or market adjustment last year, which brings them up to fair market value. Could we have negotiated it less? Sure. Could we have negotiated with them more? Sure. What we said is what we are going to do as a council, and we met, you guys, I'm sure, read the articles in the paper. We met for hours with our employees and negotiated these contracts. And we said, "We're not giving you more than we've given everybody else, but we will give you what we've given everybody else and bring you up to fair market value," and that's where we're at now.
So in other words, every full-time city employee, all the police officers, the firemen, everybody got 11 and 1/2% increase.
It depended where they were at on their pay scale. So there, if they were at their top step, they didn't get a step increase. So that's, there's difference for each of the people. But as a permanent full-time employee, those that should get step increases did. They all got a market wage adjustment this year, and they got it last year, and those three employees did not.
Okay. Personally, I would have liked to have seen it across the board all the way because to me, if I was a city employee, I was a police officer, I was a fireman working the streets, and I got a 3% step increase, that would be almost a slap in my face for the work that I'm doing. That's just me personally. That's what I would have rather have seen or addressed to where we don't make our city, other city employees upset because of the amount of increase. Should they have been increased? Yeah, I think they probably should have. But the 11.5% is what I have a little problem with because, again, if I was a city fireman, and I'm, as you know, I'm from the fire industry, and I was doing my job and being a paramedic and risking my life for what I do, and I find out the city manager got 11.5%, and I got a 3%, that doesn't even cover cost of living nowadays. That's just my own personal opinion. Thank you.
And Mr. Brayden, that is over the last two-year period. That is what the city staff got if they, if they were eligible. But it's the same number the city staff got across the board. So everyone, the step increase is a 3 and 1/2% with our current pay structure over a 12-step program. Last year, every city employee received a COLA of 3%. And in this budget, if it passes this evening, they will receive a 5% wage stabilization, and that's to keep it up with market. So it's just taking these three positions and ensuring that they get the same thing that every other city staff member has received or was eligible for over the last two-year period. So in actuality, these three positions are already behind because they didn't receive what everyone received last year. So, yeah, please, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Robert Fisher. So it seems kind of uniform across the country that the Personnel Department's responsibility is to spread the dissatisfaction with pay about as uniformly as possible. But 11% increase in pay is pretty doggone nice. And I'm not sure I'm getting value for all of that in terms of what some of the other comments that have been made. And I was wondering, what cities were used in the study to decide what our staffs should be paid?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Fisher. Dr. Kimbleton will answer that for us.
Got to find it, but I've got.
Mayor and Council, according to the city code, the market study agencies we're required to use include the city of Avondale, the city of Buckeye, the city of Casa Grande, the city of Flagstaff, the city of Goodyear, the city of Marana, the city of Maricopa, the city of Oro Valley, the city of Prescott, and the city of Yuma.
Thank you. Yeah, and those were negotiated by council and the staff organizations for public safety.
It's my understanding that the city of Phoenix pays their city manager a whole lot less than that. So I guess that doesn't count for having a large city included in your calculations. But it's my understanding the city of Phoenix doesn't pay their city manager near this much.
Yeah, and I would just challenge you to look that up again and verify that number because that's not a correct statement. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Hi, my name's Bridget Haggis. I am a teacher here. I've been here for 17 years with the district. And I would just like to speak to the value of Judge Kalali and some of the other city council members or city members that we have here. Judge Kalali has worked with my classes over the years to teach us about the judicial system. He has come into my classroom. He has attended school events, and he has had my students come to the courthouse and observe the judicial system in practice. And I cannot say enough for what he has done for my students over the last 17 years. And I will say that it is an absolute disservice to this community if these members are not paid what they are worth. So he is very much valued by me and my students. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. David Burnett, and I'd like to say that in regards to the raise for the city manager, we're talking like over $20,000 a raise. And because, just because you think that you were gonna, you promised them or it was in the books or something like that, but you say the city is running a deficit, so you're going to give them a raise anyway, no?
No, the city's not running a deficit. Those are information other people are saying. We're in a good financial position. If you stay for the public hearing on the budget, you'll, you'll learn a little bit about that later in this meeting, but we're in a good position.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking, if you can't afford it, why would you do it anyway?
Great question, but we can afford it, and we have money allocated in the budget to address staff wages and salaries across the board, including these three positions we're talking about tonight.
But with the criteria you have, it's basically a pass/fail for the.
Yeah, you meet city code or you don't. So you could.
No, pass/fail. I mean, it's either satisfactory or not. So that's like, you know, if you're going to college, it's pass/fail. It's not like an A, B, C, or D, or F, you know, it's just you either pass or you don't. So I don't think that's right. A lot of people don't think he's a pass, so.
Well, we're talking about the magistrate now, so stay focused on who we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, Miss King. Hi, it's Bonnie Toy. You just told us to look up the, I believe the judge is a really great judge, and he's always been very kind and friendly to me, and I appreciate his stuff. I do hope and look forward to him with his helping in the future with those citizens that are looking forward to his rehabilitation court and your new courthouse. You did ask someone to look up the city manager pay for Phoenix, and I found this website that says, well, I went to just the whole info, and each one of the salary.com, ziprecruiter.com, citymanagercomparablesalary.com, all of them say that the city managers in Phoenix make under $100,000. Just want to say that.
Yeah, again, I challenge you to do a little bit more work than just that peripheral view. The city manager of Phoenix makes more than that. Yeah.
That you, you said to please look up, look it up.
I didn't know I had to say use valid sources, so please use valid sources and look up the information.
Which would you consider a valid source?
One that doesn't use algorithms to assess, but that's not the correct information.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Thank you.
All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I just wanted to make a statement. One of the challenges that I have with these three contracts is really is 11.5% increase. It's proposed in our budget coming up. It's 5% for the rest of our employees. But we also have part-time employees, and they're receiving nothing. And thank you, Ms. Kimball, we did have a very good discussion about what that, you know, would entitle. And when I had asked her what that would look like if we paid those part-time employees, and I know there's a process that we discussed, and I appreciate that, it was a difference of $30,000 to cover all those part-time employees. That was just a number she gave off the top of her head. So I have a challenge, I'm really challenged, and that's just one of them, is one of the reasons that I can't vote yes on these, but I just wanted to make that public.
Thank you. And we'll hear maybe in our budget discussion later, but 5% is a wage stabilization in this year's budget. A step increase would be 3 and 1/2%. So it'd be 8 and 1/2% total for regular full-time folks. All right, any additional discussion or possible motion? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah, here's a good example to me. 11 and 1/2% seems a lot. I have to admit that, especially that we moved everybody up. I worry about in the next two or three years, a lot of these municipalities that went out and got all these positional analysis while we were getting hit pretty heavy with assessments or, you know, recession issues, that how are we going to come out of it in the next five years? I'm not too sure. But I'm going to go back to Judge Kalali at this point, and I will be voting yes on Judge Kalali's contract because he has a whole courthouse he has to do in the next couple of years. He has been tasked with a whole lot more work, which is including moving, setting up a whole house and getting it working for us. Also, one thing about his contract that I do appreciate is it ends in two years, and we have to renegotiate again. So in two years, our judge has have a whole bunch of work to do to prove to me, to prove to you that he's doing his job and that we'd love to keep him around. But I do believe it would have been not good for our citizens if we allowed him to leave at this time. So there's my point. Thank you.
All right, any additional comments?
I will because I want to make a clarifying statement. And because we talked about the perpetual contract and where the judge is, is only two years. The mayor somewhat alluded to it earlier. Magistrates are a little bit different. They have to have these contracts like this, and this is something that we have discussed during our negotiations with Judge Kalali. I agree. He, just like I believe these other two employees, he does a great job. And I'm very glad that we were able to come to an agreement. He is an asset to this community, just like I feel that they are. And I would have voted to give him that same contract, the perpetual contract, so we don't have to do that same small portion over and over and over again. Unfortunately, with magistrates, it doesn't work that way. So we are bound by other state law when it comes to judicial proceedings as well. So, and that's why his was a two-year and not the perpetual. Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions, or will entertain a motion?
Mayor motion?
Please.
I move to approve the city magistrate contract commencing June 24, 2023, through June 30, 2025 with Mitchell Qualley.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane. We have a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Dr. Kimbleton, and congratulations, Ms. Gary, Mr. Knutson, and Judge Qualley. We appreciate your service to Lake Havasu City and the great work that you guys have done in Lake Havasu City throughout your years of service. So thank you very much. All right, item 7.4 is adopt resolution 23-3673, authorizing the exchange of a city-owned parcel located between 181 and 161 Paseo Del Sol Avenue for an adjacent parcel located between 165 and 159 Paseo Del Sol Avenue of substantially equal value. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you so much. As you mentioned, this is a property that's on Paseo Del Sol Avenue. It belongs to the American Legion Post Number 81. They're currently located on that street. They have a parcel that is on the other side of a city-owned parcel. The city-owned parcel here is shown in blue. It's a 20-foot wide by 100-foot parcel. And the American Legion is asking for that 2,000-square-foot parcel to be traded with one of theirs that they're going to create that's exactly also 2,000 square feet, shown in green. Here, I'll make it a little more higher contrast. Arizona revised statutes does allow cities to exchange real property owned by the city for another parcel if the real property is of substantially equal value and approved by the city council. The American Legion's letter of intent explains that they will, at no cost to the city, install decorative rock in a six-foot-wide ADA-compliant concrete walkway across the new city parcel and connecting it to the Paseo Del Sol Avenue to the swap meet parking area. The American Legion will also pay for all costs associated with the request, including but not limited to parcel plaque creation, site improvements, escrow closing costs, any utility abandonments and relocations. And all improvements and abandonments will need to be completed prior to deeds being recorded. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here, and staff is also willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Yeah, do members of the council have any questions for Mr. Morris? Then the commander of the American Legion, Mr. White is here. I don't know if you want to make a presentation or if you had any comments to add to the conversation?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I would like to thank each and every one of you for being so gracious to work with us on this parcel of property that is so dearly needed. And a special thanks goes out to Luke Morris for his work in helping us get to this point. Each and every one of you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commander. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to? Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motions. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the American Legion as a veteran in this community and the work that you do with the veteran community, and this is such an awesome idea of a way to be able to expand your services to continue to help our veterans at no cost of the taxpayers. To me, this is a win-win for the city and coming up with this idea and bringing it forward to us, I just think is a wonderful thing that you guys are doing and looking forward to working with you and and keep up the good work. Thank you for this.
Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Peter Moses?
I will also note that I'm I'm excited for their expansion going forward. I did check with the association because all of those are city parcels for the benefit of the association as a whole, and they are fully in support of the expansion for this, for the American Legion, so we appreciate you.
Any additional comments or will entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 23-3673 authorizing the exchange of a city-owned parcel located between 181 and 161 Paseo Del Sol Avenue for an adjacent parcel located between 165 and 159 Paseo Del Sol Avenue of substantially equal value.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke, a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is item 7.5, approved funding agreement with Gold Lake Havasu for tourism services on behalf of the city. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you is a professional service agreement for Gold Lake Havasu. Some history here, the city has contracted with Gold Lake Havasu, formerly known as the Convention and Visitors Bureau since 1996. The existing contract with Gold Lake Havasu is, again, a professional service agreement. They receive monthly distributions of $133,333.33 or a total of $1.6 million from the city to Gold Lake Havasu each and every year. And as part of that agreement, the city, through contractual arrangement, identifies the responsibilities and obligations that Gold Lake Havasu has in return for the funds that are are paid by the city to Gold Lake Havasu. Some of those, as indicated in the funding agreement, include the promotion of Lake Havasu City, including our community, our vision and our goals, to serve as the primary contact for tourism and promotion of Lake Havasu City, and to serve as the referral point, to designate, establish and operate a visitor center for tourist information, provide the city with a quarterly report, and there's a, in terms of what needs to be included in that quarterly report, that that comes through my office and then is forwarded over to each member of the city council. Some other terms within the agreement, or again, obligations, responsibilities, include to seek grant funds to promote tourism, to augment the funds that come from the city, and as well as perform projects that are assigned by the city council or city manager that fall underneath the the expertise of Gold Lake Havasu. All of the 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 terms of the existing agreement are are exactly the same as the proposed agreement that sits before you, Mayor and Council, with one exception, and that is the the term of the agreement, which would be a six-year term for this agreement, and but it does contain the the ability for early termination from Gold Lake Havasu's perspective or from the city's perspective. And with that, I know that we have Terrence Concanon, who's the director of Gold Lake Havasu, as well as several board members from Gold Lake Havasu that that are here in attendance, and I can turn that back over to you for for your direction, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson, for the introduction of this item, just by way of history, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Concanon if you have any comments before we open the public hearing and get feedback from members of the council. This tourism fund goes back to the 1980s when the industry, so hotels at the time in the 80s came forward and I wanted to levy a 3% bed tax on all overnight occupancy, with that money going to tourism promotion and tourism development within our community. Then in 1996, again, the industry came forward to levy a 1% food and beverage tax, so that's a tax on anything at a restaurant or a banquet hall or something along those lines. And at that time, further solidified what the money would be used for. 75% of the monies would go to Gold Lake Havasu for tourism or tourism promotion in its entirety, and then 25% of those funds would go to the partnership economic development. That stayed true for many, many years until we renegotiated this contract three years ago, and at that time, we went to a specific contract, as Mr. Knutson mentioned, of 1.6 million dollars to provide those services to our community rather than the percentage base. And at that time, some of the discussion was, what is it that we need to to operate and run a tourism organization? And and through the process, we we negotiated a contract of 1.6 million dollars, but the intent was that the the taxes would always go for tourism or economic development investment. In the in the past, we did change that, again, like I said, a few years ago, but that's just a way of history of where we, how we got here and what we're doing and what the intentions were. This doesn't include the 2% tax that every person pays on on a city sales tax that goes into our general fund. Right now, we collect about, just on the tourism funds that I just mentioned, about 4.4 million dollars in taxes. The two contracts that are before us this evening total 2.1, so we're putting in, in addition to the 2% sales tax, there's what, 2.2 million or so additional dollars that are going into the general fund, which is the same fund for police, fire, parks, and the like, that are helping to offset those costs that our residents would pay otherwise through tourism funds. But that's just a way of history, so we're all starting kind of from the basis of of the starting point. With that, Mr. Concanon, if you had any comments, then we'll open up to comments from the council.
Thank you, Mayor Sheehy. I'd just like to thank you and City Manager Knutson and City Council for having me here again today and for looking at extending our contract for six years. It is truly the it is truly the love of my life, as I've told every one of you, I'm a tourism geek, to get up every morning, go into my office at 6 o'clock and see my, well, they're not all there at 6 o'clock, but see my wonderful, incredible, hardworking, diligent staff come in and love everything that they do for this city. But we are particularly proud of helping our city and our stakeholder businesses see the highest tourism revenue in the city's history for the years 2019, 2021, and 22. We're particularly proud of our role as the largest financial contributor to the 50th anniversary of the London Bridge and the driver behind the marketing and media outreach for the celebration, resulting in worldwide media coverage, nearly $15 million in ad value equivalency, a lot of eyes, seeing what an amazing community we have here. I'm really proud of writing two successful grant proposals that brought in over $350,000 of additional funds for our organization for additional marketing and for holiday enhancements. I'm particularly proud at how we collaborate with other organizations to bring First Fridays, farmers market, community youth markets, and other programs to the community, including one that didn't fall within the purview of this particular contract, but I will bring it up anyways. I'm really proud of our partnership with the Lake Havasu Hospitality Association and Havasu Helps Hospitality, which raised over $60,000 in 2019 to feed 8,535 of our furloughed hospitality workers. And then finally, I'm really proud, and I know my staff is really proud, of working every day with our stakeholders, with the city manager, with the mayor, with the city council, with city staff, with other organizations to tell the story, to tell the stories of Lake Havasu City and let the entire world know what a world-class destination we are for outdoor adventure. But particularly, we're really proud of the part, the the small part maybe, but the part that we play to make this community a better place to live and certainly a better place for those that want to visit to visit. So thank you for letting me say something.
Yeah, thank you, Terrence. All right, do any members of the council have any comments, questions? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I have a couple concerns. I don't like the six-year, why are we changing to six years? What's the reasoning behind that for the contract?
Yeah, so a six-year contract gives certainty when you have an agency of record and you're running long-term marketing programs, you have to have some consistency. And so through the discussions, it was determined that that would be a good timeframe for those agreements to be able to be considered by that organization.
Okay, I don't care for it. And there's just, and I'm not going to, you know, go through this whole contract and pick things apart, but, you know, under the duties and obligations and responsibilities, I mean, there's a few of these that I don't feel like they've fulfilled. I mean, the last one, number 12, present a minimum annual to the city council summary of accomplishments. We're, they're in front of us today and we don't even have what their accomplishments are. You would think that they would at least have given us what they've done the last year when we're renewing their contract. And at the very end, it says the Gold Lake Havasu agrees to contact the city to schedule a time to present during the first quarter of each calendar year. They haven't been here. I mean, there's, they have not been here. That's violation of the contract right there. And I won't go into details on number five, but, I mean, they've failed in this area many times where they collaborate with the city manager on policy development related to tourism, including promotional activities, special events, and activities that impact the city. We've had a lot of issues. Like, I'm not going to bring up the past, but we had. So I I have some concerns with this and them falling through. I just went, did a quick through my emails, my city email, and the last report I got was a board meeting package from 2022. Like, that doesn't give me anything, and they may be giving it, they may give it to, you know, Justin. We do get a couple things, and I can't remember the last thing that you sent us. I think that we get the quarterly reports from you. But as some of these, they're failing in these areas, so I kind of, I kind of have some issues with this contract.
Yeah, that's fair. With in regards to the quarterly report, Mr. Knutson sends it out to all members of the council. I know that just because I'm copied on it and I see, I'm one of of them, and Terrence sends out every month the board packet to all of us, so I don't know what email it's going to, but when I read, you're all on there.
No, she's absolutely correct. I have not sent out a board packet in in a couple of months. Simply simply an oversight on my part.
So there's the board packet. I get it. So is that through the quarterly report?
I send a quarterly report to to Jess. He also sits on the on the board, and so he gets that that monthly report from me.
Your quarterly report, though, has the meeting minutes, the board.
It has all of that, yes. It has every single thing that we have ever touched our hand, placed our hands on.
Yeah, so I see the board packet, and I think we all do, because it's sent to us quarterly.
Mayor, council, so each quarter, there's a report that that comes comes through my office from Gold Lake Havasu, as well as from the Partnership for Economic Development, and that's passed along in the the monthly updates that get sent to to each council member as part of the, what I call the go-to file or the good-of-the-order file, which contains a number of updates and and information, and those quarterly reports are contained within each and every one of those.
Mayor, I appreciate that, but in this contract, it doesn't say it's coming from the city manager. It says it's going to come from Gold Lake Havasu. And again, we have, I would expect today, going over their contract, a list of their accomplishments, so I can look at it to say, oh, okay, you know, this validates, this justifies why I'm going to give you this today. I don't, I don't have that. I don't know. I mean, I've never been the liaison on there. I don't go to their meetings. That, I'm not supposed to do that. I mean, I can and I will do that if that's what I need to do to get these reports, but according to this contract, I don't have to do that. I should get, just get them.
All right, are there any, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, Mayor. I'm a businessperson, and that's what I do. And there's no offense here for anything other than you all out here are the taxpayers. I'm responsible for your tax dollars. Back in the day, we did a vote to the people, and the people said that they wanted this amount of money go to Partners of Economic Development and this amount to go to tourism. What I know is we have an amazing finance department right here in this building. What I know is if you have an event, you have to go see Anthony Kowalski to get that started, or the city clerk to get that started. Then they have to go within this building and go to the police department and let them know what the events are. Then they have to head over to the fire department to make sure the fire department knows everything that's going on. And then we have to go to the public works department to make sure that we're covering their streets and infrastructure for these events that are coming and going. Then after the events come and go, and sometimes we don't even get the proper information of what kind of events are going to happen, then the problem lies with, as a businesswoman, if I'm already paying for one finance person and all these people, why wouldn't we bring this in-house? Why wouldn't we bring it in-house? And go out and find the best employees we can, and I'm sure a lot of them are with Terrence, or maybe bring them in-house where we can actually keep an eye on your money? Because not only that, that $4 million that comes in, I want an itemized document from our accounting firm that tells us exactly how much money is you, of that tax dollars is going exactly to tourism. That's what you asked me to do. You tasked me to do this back in the day. I wasn't your city council person then, I am now. And then you've tasked me to make sure the exact accurate amount of money is going to the Partners of Economic Development. I feel that we have money in banks, we're double-dooing, double-doing a lot of jobs that we should not do. And to me, it's just not good business, and so that means we're not efficient. But I'm a city council person, I have zero control over what events are coming in, who we're talking to, what events we're not promoting, what events we are promoting, how many events we're sending over to Jillian, and she's doing it for free for us, and I'm very confused by that, because I've had a lot of taxpayers come up to me and say, we have no business marketing in San Francisco and Chicago. I have no control over it, none. And I think back in the day, we did this board to keep an eye on all of it, and it was a good idea, but back in 1980, things have changed since then, a lot of things, including our community. Back then, you had to do advertising and newspapers and radio ads and, we didn't have internet that all of us are blasting and promoting our our city on a regular basis. And look, I cannot believe that the C V B is the only one responsible for the amount of tourism that we have today. So my vote on this contract is only for you because I truly think that we could do a better job if it was in-house, and I want all my, our integrity and our our logos and everything back under our roof. This is the house of the people. This is your house, and tourism is the most important thing in this community, other than police, fire, and, you know, what I'm trying to say. So there's my soapbox. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or, yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so here's my thoughts. Everybody that that has watched me over the years knows that I have been an outstanding or outspoken critic of Gold Lake Havasu, and not because of the job that they're doing. Terrence and I have had conversations, he and I have not agreed on things, and and we've, we have agreed to disagree when we've walked out of the room, and I have not always agreed with him. And but we can have those conversations, but it's not about the job that Gold Lake Havasu is doing, it's about the amount of money that we were always paying Gold Lake Havasu. Now, the citizens voted for a tourism tax, for lack of other terms, on this bed tax that is now, as the mayor said, is generating 4.4 million dollars. That's where I had the issue was when we, the way we used to do things when I first got on the council, 100% of that money would then go to Gold Lake Havasu and the Partnership for Economic Development. I didn't think they needed all that money. I thought that a large portion of that money should come back, go into our city coffers because all those tourists coming to town cause us additional expense, police, fire, parks, cleaning up the trash, all of that. So we did away with that, and we came up with this contract last year where we paid them a set amount of money, and we paid, and we'll talk about the other, the other organization later, but a set amount of money to Gold Lake Havasu for them to do their job. I felt that it was fair. The thing I like about the six-year contract and this contract is this contract is the same amount of money as it was last year. You all know, and we've said this, prices go up, but we're not raising the amount of money that we give them for the next six years. It's the same amount of money every single year, and if they start doing things that we don't like, we can terminate the contract. So that's not an issue. The other thing that I want to bring up is the board for Gold Lake Havasu. They have their own board. We have a new, relatively new board chairman, and I've been working with her, and some of the things we're working on is making sure that the goals of Gold Lake Havasu are the goals of our city, and so that they coincide and they meet up. The thing I like about this board that we have is this board is made up of Lake Havasu City residents, not from all the the city staff or anything. It's the people that are in the hospitality business, they own the businesses, they work in the hospitality business, they want what's best for the city and the tourism, because that's what what generates money for their businesses. So having a board made up of our local business people that are in that industry is the best thing to do. So I believe in. So I believe in making this contract with Gole Lake Havasu. I like the term of the contract because it doesn't raise the rates and we will be continuing to work with the board. One of the other things that I talked about earlier was the fact that Gole Lake Havasu is trying to come up with other ways of funds, other generation. Mr. Concanon talked about that earlier. They apply for grants, so they're getting additional funding from other places and they make money at their visitor's center. So there are other funds coming into Gole Lake Havasu. I think the amount of money that we're paying them is adequate to do the job that we need done to bring the tourists into our city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. And just a correction, the current contract that's expiring is a three-year contract. And because of the significant change from formula funding to a specific dollar amount, that was at the request of Gole Lake Havasu as they circled back with all of their vendors and such. Otherwise, it would have been a longer-term contract that would have been offered for the expiring contract now. Any additional comments or feedback from members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. You don't have to sign up for the public hearing, but we did have one person do so. So we'll start with the person that signed up, Solisic Kruger. If you can make your way to the podium. And then from there, anyone else that would like to address this, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and council members. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. You probably know this, but for the last 21 and a half years, I've spent all of my working hours and then some at the Chamber of Commerce. And I've had the opportunity to observe and work together with our building mates and friends, the Partnership for Economic Development and the Gole Lake Havasu Tourism Bureau. You can't work across the hall from people for this long and not learn all about them and the jobs they perform and the benefits that we receive as well from the culture that they've created. And as a reminder, the, the Chamber of Commerce receives, we don't ask for city funding, we don't receive any city funding. In all of those years, I've seen many changes in both PED and Gole Lake Havasu. I've watched CEOs come and go, along with staff members. Some have been bad, some have been okay, some have been good. But I must say that in all these years, I've never worked with more amazing teams than the ones that are there now in place in these two organizations. Although we are three separate companies with different boards, organizational structures, business plans and management styles, we all have a common goal and that is to build and maintain a strong local economy in Lake Havasu City. Both PED and Gole Lake Havasu have innovative and visionary qualities that have been highly successful. And they continue to amaze me each time I talk with them about the next project or program coming around. Both organizations have the highest level of professionalism and integrity. They have the training and education needed to create even more successes in our city. These are the experts. Their work drives revenue into Lake Havasu City. That revenue helps businesses grow and trickle down through the community, supporting everyone in every walk of life that calls this community home. Renewing contracts annually is time-consuming for city staff and the teams at the PED and Gole Lake Havasu when they can be working on ideas and projects that will benefit Lake Havasu City even more. I appreciate this opportunity and I offer my personal support to both organizations.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, please.
Okay, Richard Morgan-Braden again. This is the main reason I came tonight was this particular one. First thing I, this is the first I've heard of a six-year contract. I think, I believe that's ridiculous in my own personal opinion. And I also don't agree with their thought that they're the ones that increased 2019, 20, 2019 and 2020 and these large increase of our incomes. Because they actually didn't. That was COVID. The reason why we tripped up so much during that time period is because California shut down. They shut down their lakes, they shut down their motels, they shut down their restaurants. They had nowhere to go but here because we were still open. That's the biggest benefit we got and what raised our funds that were coming in the most. But what I wanted to talk about the most here was the money. Because that's what this is about. Right now, as I understand it, Gole Lake Havasu still has over $2 million in the bank on spare that they haven't used yet. So I think paying them $1.6 million a year is ridiculous. They're not using it all now or they wouldn't have that much in reserve. And I, I don't know if this, if that figure has grown, but I was told it was, but I, I don't know. I didn't verify that. And what I think we should do is take that down to $600,000 a year, let them use up some of their reserves for a while and come back for more when they need it. Lakes, take that extra million dollars, live, give it to the police and the fire department. They're the ones that have to deal, and the parks department, excuse me. They're the ones that have to deal with the problems that all of these tourists are creating down there. Because they're not doing anything for me up on Star Line Drive. There are no tourists coming up there, thank God. I don't have any B and Bs by my house and I'm very proud of that. I'm very glad I don't, to be honest with you. But I personally believe we need, they don't need that much money. We've got to be better stewards of our tax dollars that comes in. I know we're doing very well on our, on our funds. Our budget is good. Our money coming in is fantastic. It's not going to always be that way. Things could change. We need to be careful with what we do. We got to watch what money we spend. We got to cut down some of the wasteful spending that in my opinion we're doing. We needed the courthouse. Yes, we needed a courthouse. Didn't we need to do this humongous the way we did it and the over blossom budget that I've seen on that? I've kept track of all of the money that's spent on that. It's a heck of a lot more than we originally told and a heck of a lot more than what we were told to the end when we approved it. We don't need to spend $3 million on that park downtown that I personally still believe is going to make it unusable for a lot of the people that are currently using it now. We should put a bridge from the parking lot into that. That I think would be a better spending of our money. So I would like to see the amount we give them right now deducted because they don't need it. And reevaluate that in the future if they ever do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, please, make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Kim Grace Sabo. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Kim Grace Sabo. I'm the president and CEO of the Arizona Lodging and Tourism Association, otherwise known as AZLTA. The AZLTA is the leading statewide public policy organization advocating for Arizona's travel, lodging, arts attractions and sports industry. Statewide, the association represents hotels and resorts, tourism attractions, destination marketing organizations, sports teams, airlines, airports, and hundreds of related businesses that supply goods and services to the industry. The AZLTA is focused on advocacy, collaboration and education to generate support and increase awareness of the profound impact our leading industry has on Arizona jobs, tax revenues and economic growth. Today, I'm here to emphasize the immense significance of the tourism industry for our state and for Lake Havasu City. I'd like to shed light on the remarkable return on investment that arises from supporting tourism and strongly urge your support for the funding agreement with Gole Lake Havasu for tourism services on behalf of the city. The city serves as a gateway to numerous captivating attractions, drawing visitors from across, across the country and around the world. The tourism industry plays a vital role in the community, providing economic opportunities, job creation and fostering a vibrant atmosphere that is cherished by all. According to the Arizona Commerce Authority, the city attracts 1 million visitors each year with its historic London Bridge, pristine lake, friendly community, abundant sunshine, ideal weather and wide, wide range of restaurants and lodging. Historically, Lake Havasu City's economy is based on tourism. The city attracts thousands of visitors each year as a result of its scenic attractions, including hosting the top lake and desert racing event in the world, one of the largest hot air balloon festivals in the nation, as well as several classic car, hot rod and boat shows, as you all know. In addition, the city is also home to more than 1,000 acres of park space, which includes amenities such as pickleball courts, swimming beaches and hiking trails. In Arizona, the tourism industry holds a vital place in our economy, contributing significantly to the state's general fund. In fact, according to recent data, Arizona's tourism industry accounts for an impressive 18% of the state's general fund. This statistic alone underscores the importance of tourism as a cornerstone of our economy, economic stability and growth. By supporting tourism, we not only strengthen our local economy, but also contribute to the overall prosperity of Arizona. To effect, to effectively promote Lake Havasu City as a premier tourist destination and maximize the benefits of tourism, it is essential to have a dedicated organization specializing in destination marketing. This is where Lake, where Gole Lake Havasu, a destination marketing organization, otherwise known as a DMO, plays a pivotal role. A DMO is responsible for strategic marketing and promoting a destination to attract visitors, generate revenue and enhance the overall visitor experience. Gole Lake Havasu is committed to showcasing the unique charm and natural beauty of the city to potential visitors. Their expertise lies in crafting compelling marketing campaigns, implementing targeted advertising strategies and fostering partnerships with industry stakeholders. Gole Lake Havasu can leverage its specialized knowledge and resources to effectively position Lake Havasu City as a must-visit destination. The funding agreement with Gole Lake Havasu for tourism services is an invaluable opportunity to invest in the future success of the city. Allocating financial resources to the DMO ensures that Lake Havasu remains competitive and appealing to tourists. After all, competition is fierce with destinations from around the country and around the world all vying for these ever-important visitors. This agreement allows for enhanced marketing efforts, expands reach to new markets and creates engaging experiences that leave a lasting impression to all who visit. Further, by supporting the funding agreement, the city empowers Gole Lake Havasu to develop innovative events and attracts, and attractions and fosters collaborations with local businesses. The synergy between the DMO, the city and the community cultivates an environment where tourism thrives, generating economic growth and benefiting every resident of Lake Havasu City. In conclusion, I urge the Lake Havasu City Council to recognize the immense value of the tourism industry for the city, again, acknowledging that 18% of the state's general fund budget comes from tourism. I respectfully request and strongly encourage you to lend your unwavering support to the funding agreement with Gole Lake Havasu for tourism services, as it is a crucial step towards securing our future prosperity. Together, we can leverage the expertise of Gole Lake Havasu to effectively promote the city, expand our visitor base and enhance the overall quality of life for the city residents. By investing in tourism, we invest in the future of Lake Havasu. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex Ross, Mayor's City Council. The bouncing ball of tourism, the industry, brought to you by the businesses in town, the taxes, the revenue that you're debating. I think it's simply flawed thinking to think that council or the government can do a better job than the businesses can. And that's my only point. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, can I have a response to that? Yeah, I, I wanted to say that never once did I say we needed to dissolve the board. I'm saying let's bring it all in-house and streamline our expenses. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Ron Thomas, council members. My only point to this issue is, all of us as taxpayers, as you mentioned, and I'm glad you did, our money comes out, all this money, millions of dollars goes into tourism. To make things better for the tourist, where is our return? I remember just a year and a half ago, you and I stood in the middle of McCollack during Winterfest. I said, hey, when are we going to fix the intersection of Mulberry and Havasu Avenue 95? I know, and you mentioned it had to do with the state and you're going back and forth and us and whatever. Bottom line is Havasu has some of the worst roads I've ever driven on. When is that money going to come back to us, not just the tourists that come in? I keep hearing, it's like, oh, it's going to make it so much better for the residents. Mr. Mayor, please, two examples of how it makes my life better as a homeowner here. Can, can you give me two examples?
Yeah, I can give you a lot of examples, but I just want two. So good news in, in our hearing on the budget, you'll see $10 million allocated in top of additional monies for roads in our budget that we'll be talking about this evening. But two things what, what tourism do, if you go to any events within our community, you can thank tourism. If you go to one of the amazing restaurants within our community that's family-owned, you can thank tourism for helping to support when, when locals aren't there. There's many, many examples of, of why tourism is here. Most folks moved to Lake Havasu City because they visited here at one point or another and moved back to it. So, I mean, there's several reasons why, why tourism is important. But as I mentioned earlier, and I believe Vice Mayor Lane had made a comment as well, there's additional money based on the way the contract was renegotiated three years ago, from the tourism fund that was originally dedicated to tourism and economic development that we reallocated to ensure go help pay for general fund activities, which is police, fire and, and parks. So.
That's fine. How does it help us, Joe homeowner, when are our roads going to get improved? This is our money you're spending. I don't see it coming back. As far as events, I can thank tourism for our events. I was president of, when I have this largest nonprofit for two years, went to all the events. We had booths at everything. We did a lot, a lot of charity work. Where is my tax dollars going? Where are my tax dollars going? Where is everybody's tax dollars going? And, and how is it coming back? I guess I really just want the roads fixed because I can't even drive my cars, you know? And, and you, you told me 2023, they were going to fix them, they're going to go all the way up and down to 95. This happens to be June of 2023 and not one pebble is being relocated to fix a road.
They're, they're starting it on the south end of town right now. That's estate projects that we're working in collaboration, but roads are coming. You know, without tourism, we would all be paying more money in property taxes, but.
Well, that's been approved too, I guess. And that's what's helping these pay raises go by is my property taxes going to go up again. So, I don't know.
Not, not, not from Lake Havasu.
I'm not here to debate that, so, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Sheehy, City Council. My name is Sam Harrison. I'm sure all of you know that. I'm one of the people that Vice Mayor Lane just recently referred to as one of the, the newer members of the Gole Lake Havasu Board. And I've been really, truly impressed by what the board does and how it functions, how it operates. And, well, I see some people complaining because we've got money in the reserve fund. That's generally a good thing. I don't see a problem with that. And I don't think you improve the process by dragging it all into city hall and, and making it part of the government function. And as far as Councilmember Lynn's comment about it being a six-year contract and that being ridiculous, it was made clear that that could be terminated by either the city or Gole Lake Havasu at any time. So I think it's a great setup and I don't see any point in wrecking a good thing. Between my son and I, we run three or four businesses in this town and we rely heavily on tourism and I'm grateful for what the city does. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Robert Fisher. I moved to Lake Havasu about five years ago because I kind of liked the community. But as far as the benefits of tourism, I don't see benefits of tourism for myself because when I go to, try to go to the lake on a weekend, the parking lot's full and I can't get in because the tourists all got there. And other places where I want to go, the tourists are there. And so I really don't enjoy having tourists clog the channel with like the freeway at 4:30 all weekend long and not be able to enjoy that with my family. So I'm not all in favor of loading this town down with tourists so you can't just, can't even move hardly. You go down through the channel on the weekend and it's, it's bizarre. So I'm not all in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Short girl problems. Good evening. My name is Heather Pataschewski and I am the board chair for Gole Lake Havasu. I just wanted to thank you all for our partnership with Lake Havasu City. We value the ability to be the tourism marketing and promotion organization for this community. We're doing a really great job. All, some of the biggest iconic events that both tourists and residents enjoy are a byproduct of just some of the work that we do here. We also market the area to others so they can come and enjoy all the great things that our city has to offer. So thank you again for your partnership and I encourage you to support the renewal of our contract this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
She is short. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sean Lawless. I am the executive, one of the executive vice chairs for the Gole Lake Havasu Board. And with my experience with the organization, it is a great benefit for this town. Since Robert McCollack first noticed Lake Havasu from the air. Since Robert McCulloch first noticed Lake Havasu from the air, landed his plane, and decided to buy it all, we have been a tourist destination. That is what we are built on. That's what drives the economy of this town. That's what keeps all of us employed who work here, who own businesses here, who are servers, who own hotels. Even working in the grocery stores, we benefit from people coming to this town and enjoying all the beauty that we have to offer. One of the ways we get them here is marketing. Somebody had mentioned that, you know, it was COVID that brought all this money to us because we were the only ones open, and everybody else was shut down. Well, how did they know we were open? Excellent marketing. Okay, so we drive a large part of the economic engine. And I am proud to be one of the public stewards of not only yours, but my tax dollars that go to growing this town and growing these events. So, I am a big proponent of renewing the contract. I think six years is a great opportunity for the organization to grow and gives confidence in our partners to get those long-term marketing contracts and bring long-term events to this community that we need to help grow the town. So, I'd like, thank you for your support. And all of our meetings for everyone are public. So, if you'd really like to see how the organization runs, see the feedback we get, please come join us at our meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really short. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Janine Samp. My husband and I own a small business that is in the tourism industry here in Lake Havasu City. Like majority of our small businesses, we are reliant upon tourists visiting our area. The expertise and the efforts of Go Lake Havasu, it do not go unnoticed as our tourism, marketing, and promotional event organization. It's extremely beneficial to small businesses like ours. We can't do it without them. We have to have them. They help us. They bring people here, and then we take it from there. So, we, I really ask that you support this agreement and sign the contract this evening. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Taylor Harrison. For those of you that have deja vu, I am his son. So, anyhow, I'm here, actually, we talk so much about businesses and about the benefit that Havasu gets from having visitors here based on business. But there are so many community organizations that benefit from that, too. All of the things that a lot of people in the audience are thinking that just happen, lights in the lighthouse and everything like that, those don't happen without dollars. And those dollars come from local organizations doing events. And that comes from tourists coming here to Lake Havasu, supporting our community, supporting the things that the city doesn't support because they can't support everything. Lights and lighthouses are just one example. The Marine Association with the bags when you're going to the beach and there's those bags there, those aren't free. Those are, they have to be paid for. That comes from visitors. Now, the Go Lake Havasu Board is doing a great-
Harrison, can you just address the board?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I wanted the city to know. But for the board, I want you guys to know how much the Go Lake Havasu Board is really putting into that. And I do think, to Councilmember Campbell, it is important to have a separate board, not city government, doing that. Private industry sometimes can do amazing things without governance in the way. And with all due respect, I think Go Lake Havasu is really putting Havasu on the map. In fact, in all of my experience in Chamber and Rotary and all the other organizations I'm involved in, the first thing you want your name on is the Go Lake Havasu Events List. If somebody else is on there for that weekend, good luck having your event that weekend. So, they're doing a fantastic job promoting Lake Havasu, and I think it's very beneficial for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Sheehy and council members, my name's Dan Roddy. I'm a citizen of Lake Havasu City and a taxpayer here as well. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak to you today and also, or the council, I'm sorry, and also just applaud you because you've created here an opportunity to take something that is taking a set-aside tax that the voters voted for for the express purpose of supporting certain efforts. You've identified one of those efforts as Go Lake Havasu through the tourism aspect of it, something that was taking a larger portion of tax money just a few years ago. You've gotten that and whittled it down to 1.6 millions. 1.6 million, well below what Lake Havasu City was spending just a few years ago. You've also gotten it to the point where we can lock that in for six years, locking in a vital component of our community, something that works very well, something that matches or exceeds what every other community in Arizona and across the nation is doing. Tourism is competitive. Lake Havasu City needs to maintain its competitive excellence. Part of doing that is having a world, a top-notch DMO. Go Lake Havasu is a top-notch DMO. I've worked in tourism throughout the country. I believe we've got a very, very good setup here. I applaud the council for creating a great deal for the taxpayers and the citizens of Lake Havasu City. We are a tourism town. We also have a lot more to offer, and we need our voice to help us spread that news. I think our voice is Go Lake Havasu. Strongly encourage you to vote yes on this agreement. And I think the six years is a great win for this council and the city. Thank you for putting it together. Thank you for getting it done. Please get it across the finish line and vote yes.
Thank you. Yep, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's Bonnie Toy. And I do enjoy Go Lake Havasu's website and a lot of the things that the tourism board does to help our city. I think they're pretty interesting business. I do wonder why the city doesn't put that job up for bid in asking for more than just Go Lake Havasu to do some of the work and why it can't be piecemealed out. And then, um, a couple of odd things. When I went to the city website and I read the agreement on here, and it says under number, is it number six? That they need to update and maintain the materials posted on the Go Lake Havasu website so a user can easily access timely information about Lake Havasu City, including events, agendas, and minutes of the public meetings of the Go Lake Havasu City Board shall be posted on the Go Lake Havasu website in a timely manner. And so, out of curiosity, of course, I had to go look at the Go Lake Havasu website for myself to see where I could find that information easily as your contract states that it's supposed to be easily found. And it took me about, I don't know. It was very not, it was not easily found. I had to go under several different places, not even places where it would just, I have no idea where you would normally look for. It ended up being underneath the board of directors. And even then, the contract that you have with them says that those agendas are supposed to be updated on a regular basis. And again, they're not. And it's really odd to me that you would, he admit to not fulfilling his, that part of his contract. He admitted that. And then, like I said, I don't understand why you don't put some of this up for bid for other businesses to be able to do. I mean, we're an amazing city. Oh, and there was one other question. You and, I believe it was back in the January meeting or the February meeting, I think it was, when Ms. Campbell asked about the trademark for Home of the London Bridge, and that the trademark was supposed to be, you were hoping to come back to the cities, to be the city trademark. And you said it would have to be negotiated into the newest contract when it came up. And I don't see that anywhere in the contract. So, I would assume that as it stands, then Lake Havasu is still not home of the London Bridge. But Go Lake Havasu is home of the London Bridge. And I don't, I don't know how you adjust any of those. And really, the whole, what if there's other people in the city who can do the job? Also, do you know, you shouldn't limit your tourism stuff to just one or two cities or three cities. We have a whole country, thousands of cities. Why aren't they marketing to all of those cities? I mean, you just go on your little Facebook page and say, hey, that was a really great story. Your weather looks great. You should come visit our city. We have really beautiful weather all the time because we live on the corner of Sunshine and Sunshine. Those are really simple things that somebody running a tourism page could do. But, yes, he admits to not fulfilling his contract, and you're about to allow him to continue. I don't understand that.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, so the contract is with Lake Havasu City and Go Lake Havasu. So, they are not responsible to email council members directly, but provide that information to the city, and they do that contractually.
Hello, David Diaz again. So, I respect all the words everyone said tonight, but I just wanted to kind of go back to what Councilmember Lynn mentioned. You know, when you have a contract, and I've negotiated many contracts worth millions and millions of dollars in my career. If you have a contract and you have specifics wording that says you do X, Y, you know, A, B, C, D to get your money, you should do A, B, C, D and have a way to measure that and see if they're doing that. And if there's some things you're not doing, I think before we renew a contract, we should make sure and ask them why. I'm very surprised, and I, I like Terrence. I have no problems with him. But if you're going to come here today and ask for a six-year extension on a contract for $1.6 million, he should have a presentation that says, this quarter, we did this, and it produced this. And this quarter, we did this, and it produced this. I don't see that. And if it's our taxpayer dollars, it should be more than sending Jess to send you guys a, the people should see that. There should be a presentation in front of the people seeing how they're earning their money. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And that is done on an annual basis. Goes over the program of work.
My name's Bridget Haggis, Mayor and City Council. Thank you again. I'm here tonight not only to show my support to Judge Calali, but also to Terrence Concanon and Go Lake Havasu. Again, being a teacher with the Lake Havasu Unified School District for the past 17 years, I've had the privilege of having community members come into my classroom and speak to my students and inspire them. And Terrence is absolutely one of those who stands out. He came to present to my students. And when he left, I vividly remember one student saying, man, he really loves Lake Havasu. There's no doubt in the passion that Terrence and Go Lake Havasu have for our city and for doing what's best for our city and promoting our city, putting on the map and keeping it on the map. And I think Terrence and Go Lake Havasu for their involvement with not only my class, but other classrooms with the school district and supporting our students and this community. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you have in mind to address the City Council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'm impressed with all of you guys. I never come to a council meeting with my mind completely made up. It is completely obvious that there has been some things this past year that I've been unhappy with. Not only have I been unhappy with it, but there's been several other constituents that have come to me, including city staff, including board members that sit on your board, have told me that they had some concerns. So, I was doing what I thought was listening to them, but I believe in community outreach. And I'm not going to say today that I think you did the best job in the world. I think we all have room for improvement. But because you're all here today, you're also my taxpayers. And I believe in community outreach, and I love the room packed with voices. And you've changed my mind. So, again, I would hope, as we move forward, that some of those concerns that my constituents had will be addressed, and we can all work together for the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment on Mr. Diaz's comment, just for clarification. The contract says that on a quarterly basis, Go Lake Havasu has to submit a report to the city manager, which he does. And then, the city manager sends that to us in his go-to file that he sends to us every single month. So, we do get that. It's just, it doesn't come directly from him. It comes through the city manager as required by the contract. Anybody that wants it can ask me. I'll send it to them. Will I get that quarterly report, Mr. Diaz? If you want it, I'll send it to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Like I said, I'm not, I don't want to argue any points here. I appreciate everyone being here. I think that Go Lake Havasu does a great job with the tourism. I'm looking at it as a business, and I'm looking at it, number 12, present a minimum annually to the city council, a summary of G H L S accomplishments. I have not seen that. And you can say that it says to the, it says to the city council. In the last sentence, G L H agrees to contact the city to schedule a time to present during the first quarter of each calendar year. That didn't happen. They didn't fulfill that part. I mean, the other ones, we can go through and word it, but they didn't do that. And I went again to look at the finances, and the last one I think I got was from Jess, I think it was November. So, it's, I want to say yes to this, based on everything out here, but a contract's a contract, and you have to follow through on contracts. And I know in the past, I've had questions on the bylaws, and Terrence sent them right to me the very next day. But I shouldn't have to do the follow-up on a contract that you're signing. I shouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Number 12, the way I read that is minimum, they need to do a presentation before the council during the first quarter of the calendar year. I believe that that has occurred. I don't have that factual information right now. I believe that they come annually and give a report. The second one is that they're going to send, or what Vice Mayor Lane had mentioned, is they send a quarterly report in which Jess sends to us. I get it, I mean, I read it. That's why I know that the board packet's included in there, but.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, contact the city to schedule a time to present during the first quarter, not send me something, present to me. Come in here, present to me so that my constituents can see it, too. It isn't my job to take it and send it out or the newspapers. It is their job to come here so I can ask him questions. I don't want to ask him a question through Jess. I don't want to ask him a question through me. I want to ask him in front of an audience. That's what I want to do, and that's what this reads. A presentation, not an agenda, not a paper, it's a presentation. So, we can, I don't want to argue terms. I mean, maybe that needs to change in there, change the way that's worded. I don't know.
Yeah, no, again, I believe that that presentation happens. I know Terrence was here. I, time goes by so fast for me. So, I don't know when it was, was it was last time? But they do make an annual presentation in front of this council as part of the contract is what I believe, so. Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I also remember a presentation not too long ago. I have no idea when, because, so I can't put a date on it. It may have been about a year ago. It may have been a little bit more. I'm not, like, I honestly can't know for sure, so I don't want to quote a date. But I definitely remember a presentation. I also get the quarterly reports and the Good of the Order email that comes from Jess, same as the PED and a lot of other stuff in there. So, I understand your concerns with making sure that be a very intentional presentation that we like to see. Some of that maybe could have been presented tonight, you know, as a choice. But, but yeah, I think that's something we can really hold their feet to the fire moving forward and making sure that they're coming. I know it was when I was the council liaison. That was one of my goals because I heard you loud and clear multiple, multiple times over the last few years of you want to know what's going on. So, as that liaison, I vowed to you, along with the rest of the council, that I would tell you everything that I possibly can tell you about what's going on. I do the same thing with the PED. I do the same thing with the PED. Unfortunately, there's NDA, you know, stuff and, and, you know, some private businesses don't want their business known, so I can't tell you everything. But that is something that our liaison is, can be charged with as well. And, and I will continue to do that with the PED for as long as I'm that liaison. And, and I think David has done a good job of, of, uh, giving us updates as well. The yearly report, I'm with you. Let's, let's hold their feet to the fire on that and, um, and, and move forward.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
Question?
Certainly.
About, quite a while ago, I asked you for some concerns that we had. And I told you, uh, three years ago, I think, when I was new on council, that I thought you were doing amazing work prior to that. Since then, we've had some problems. I have some constituents out here that are going to be very unhappy with me that I'm pushing this button because they don't think that you're doing a good enough job. My question is, is what can we do to give the confidence to all the taxpayers and all the community that we will unite a little bit better than we have been and be a little more respectful of maybe their feelings on, um, news media and others? Am I making sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, you're making sense. And I think you're referring to, uh, the, the last fall, last fall with the.
Yeah, and I didn't want to bring it up because I know you know what I'm talking about. But we, we could do a better job, I think.
We definitely will.
Meeting the needs.
We definitely will.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working, working with council as strong as I, as strong as we can.
I appreciate that.
And I mean that sincerely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve the funding agreement with Gold Lake Havasu for tourism services on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and we have a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, uh, we'll move on to item 7.6, which is approved funding agreement with the Partnership for Economic Development, uh, Inc. for attraction, retention, expansion of business on behalf of the city. Mr. Knutson?
Mayor, council, a similar arrangement is, uh, been identified with an existing contract or agreement, excuse me, a professional services agreement with the PED or the Partnership for Economic Development. Uh, the, the city relies on, uh, Mr. Gray as, as the director and the PED board, um, for all economic development activities associated with the city. We don't have, uh, staff, uh, uh, at the city that, uh, that deals with these types of activities. We have planners, we have builders, um, but in terms of the economic development, we're relying on the Partnership for Economic Development and the arrangement that's been in place for, uh, several years. Uh, this also goes back to 1996 in terms of the, the arrangement with, uh, a contract for, for services with the city and with, uh, the, the PED. Uh, the PED receives quarterly payments, a little bit different than monthly payments that went to Gold Lake Havasu. So it's quarterly payments of $125,000, uh, each quarter for a total of $500,000 on an annual basis that the city pays to Gold Lake Havasu for, uh, services rendered as identified through the agreement. They also have duties, obligations, responsibilities, uh, similar to what we described, although from an economic development perspective, uh, in the, the previous agenda item. Uh, written quarterly reports are provided by the, the PED. Uh, again, they go through my, my office and then those, uh, those, uh, reports are relayed to council, uh, once received and contained within the, the, the reporting structure of the, of the, of, uh, the communication coming from the city manager. The essential responsibilities of the Partnership for Economic Development is, is going to be, uh, business retention, expansion and workforce development. They just recently attended, it's as part of the contract, but, uh, it's something that, uh, I think has really benefited, uh, the, uh, the PD and, and, um, and Lake Havasu City as, as a community, uh, in attending the, um, ICSC recon that's in Las Vegas, that's annual. For those that don't know, that's several hundred thousand dollars of square feet of businesses that, uh, um, that operate throughout the country that's looking for expansion or location to, uh, to other, uh, cities and in throughout the United States. And so there, we are, the city is represented by Partnership for Economic Development at, um, ICSC recon each and every year, uh, and trying to bring, uh, investment and services into, uh, to Lake Havasu City. They maintain an inventory of all available land and properties in Lake Havasu City and seek grant funds for, uh, for their activities to, to augment the, the city taxpayer dollars that are paid to Gold Lake Havasu City for professional services. And, uh, we've asked them to perform certain, uh, special projects, uh, throughout the, uh, the co, the existing contract. Um, the most recent one was the, the housing study that was completed by the Partnership for Economic Development. Sorry, Mr. Gray, if I'm stepping on your toes in terms of some of the highlights that you've accomplished over the last, um, several months or years. Uh, with that, uh, this is again, a six-year contract in terms of the, the term, the term of the agreement, um, the, the city council, uh, as well as the, the PED board has the ability to terminate, uh, prior to that, if, uh, if that's the, the case. Yeah, and so that, uh, again, it's the same, uh, agreement or, or terms that are in the existing contract, uh, with the, uh, a six-year, uh, contract that's now in front of the council for, uh, for consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. Uh, for those of, uh, you at home that like to watch our council meetings, you can actually go to our website, click on the agenda item and then it fast forwards exactly to that in both video and content. So for the benefit of those folks, I'll explain the, the, the tax, uh, situation. So, uh, back in the early eighties, uh, the industry came forward to, uh, present a 3% bed tax, uh, that went to tourism promotion. In 1996, uh, the industry came forward to add a 1% food and beverage tax, uh, for restaurants, uh, banquet halls and the like, uh, and the intent was for 75% of those funds to go to Gold Lake Havasu for tourism promotion and for 25% of those funds to go to economic development, uh, the Partnership for Economic Development. Three years ago, we renegotiated, uh, contracts and at that time we went to, uh, a fee-for-service contract, uh, with the PED, uh, $500,000. Uh, we, in that fund as a, um, as the tourism fund, we currently collect about $4.4 million and the bed tax and the 1% uh, food and beverage tax. And, uh, this contract would be 500,000 of that. Gold Lake Havasu is 1.6 million, so we spent 2.1 million in economic development contracts, leaving the net of about 2.2 million dollars in, um, to offset, uh, the, the, uh, general fund expenses, which is police, fire, parks and the like. So, uh, that is what the intent of, of those taxes were several years ago, or I guess decades ago, uh, when they were put into place. Um, and here we're looking to have a discussion about, uh, renewing the contract with Partnership for Economic Dev- Development for our economic development activities, um, as Mr. Knutson just reviewed. I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Gray, who's the President and CEO of, uh, Partnership for Economic Development for some opening remarks, then we'll come back to the council and have, uh, discussion among the council before we open the public hearing. So good evening, Mr. Gray.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, James Gray, Director of Partnership for Economic Development, and I just want to assure you that I would have loved to have a PowerPoint. I was told that because of the amount of stuff on the meeting that I should give some brief remarks. So I kind of wanted to encapsulize, uh, three points. Uh, and I want to start by saying I'm on, I'm here on behalf of a board of directors, a local business, industry leaders, sector leaders, um, who I work for. Um, but when you cobble together our board, I believe it's, I think, uh, last year was about 12% of all the employees in Lake Havasu. So it's a lot of in, industry leaders. They have a lot of employees under their leadership. Uh, and then just like Gold Lake Havasu, they have a, a, a real desire to see the economic engine move forward. But I want to concentrate on three things. I want to talk about attraction. I want to talk about our new product, Nomatic, and then I want to finish with collaboration. So the first one is attraction and site selection. Now, this is the main focus of PED. It's to help foster and create investment and jobs in Lake Havasu City. Uh, Jess mentioned that, uh, we just attended ICSC in Las Vegas. We've been doing this the last couple of years. Um, this has been a very successful tool and in fact, this year we're going to double down. We are going to add another, uh, ICSC in San Diego in October. It's been really valuable, um, for a lot of reasons. Um, we've passed a few metrics for national companies, um, where we used to fight, uh, being a soft market. They consider us a hard market where we've really crested past that 50,000, but we are not, uh, in the eyes of many people seasonal. Uh, we are as busy when it's 68 or 108, uh, and you probably understand that through traffic. But I'm going to talk about just a couple of, uh, site locations in the last couple of years, uh, as we were before council with PMG, that's, uh, Ryan Buzznardo. Um, currently he has 72 full-time jobs. Um, and he has invested over $8 million in advanced manufacturing, uh, uh, tooling i- in the old Kmart facility. And then through our partnership with our state partners, the Arizona Commerce Authority, he has received over, uh, $2 million in entitlements and, um, tax credits, uh, because of his investment. And we just had Jamie Kerr, the Vice President of Commerce Authority back up here. Uh, Ryan is going to receive a second letter for the investment he's making in 10-day door, um, uh, both looking to add some tooling and also, uh, some employees. So it's just kind of a highlight. Uh, and then the other one I'd like to talk about really quickly is Speed UTV. Uh, working with Robbie Gordon over the last couple of years, uh, along with the mayor, along with Jess, uh, we are working extremely hard to relocate that entire company from Charlotte, North Carolina to make his world headquarters in Arizona. So obviously there's some great tax advantages, but some of the very particular tools we've used in this situation is a qualified opportunity fund. And it's a little bit different than, uh, other, uh, tax mechanisms and then placing him in, uh, an opportunity zone. So we're still working on that. Um, it's pretty exciting. Uh, if you're following Robbie's, uh, story, uh, he has almost 600 vehicles that are out of China, headed towards, uh, Vietnam that will be coming through the pipeline. You start adding that up, uh, it's north of $25 million. So, uh, he is really, uh, starting a, a small car manufacturing business here, which is, is pretty incredible. I'm going to go next to, uh, Nomatic. Uh, we're very excited about it. That's our new cowork and entrepreneur center in downtown. Uh, it's been open, I don't know, 85, 100 days. We have 17 companies in there now. We have 20, that results in about 23 total memberships in there. Um, we're just starting, this is just the beginning of that product. Um, we're starting a lot of the, um, programming, um, this summer and fall, uh, to bring value. But before that, uh, Nomatic has been hosting a ton of things. One of them, uh, next week, uh, the Arizona Association of Economic Developers, their entire leadership from across the state, it's about 25 of them will be coming here to plan the spring conference. They're bringing the state association back to Lake Havasu in '24, uh, so we're excited to host them. And then finally, I kind of wanted to add, end on collaboration, um, how PED, uh, works with Lake Havasu City. Um, and there's a couple of projects. Um, I would mention ALO Fiber. Uh, PED worked under a leadership team of Jess and, and, uh, Mayor on so many initiatives to get that here. Um, we brought in the state broadband director, Jeff Sabaka. Uh, we've done an incredible amount of site location for them. We introduced them to, uh, sector partners, uh, utility easements. Um, we're currently leasing them construction yards. Uh, we've done site location for their retail side and currently they just had a training of 60 employees in, in Nomatic. But this is, I bring it up in collaboration because this is just a project that I'm one part of a team, working with Jess, working with development services, working with, uh, council members, uh, working with the mayor. And then the next one, we were just asked over this year, kind of a, to work, uh, help facilitate the aero, the aeronautical land, uh, lease RFP. And because there's upcoming interviews and that's an RFP, I'm not going to comment on it, except for to say that there's two incredible responses to that. And I think that that will lead to the development of the south side of the airport. And I think that should be pretty exciting for the city. So those, just a couple of things of, uh, a lot of times I hear that PED is a standoff organization. I think, man, I'm just sitting literally monthly, weekly, uh, right? It, I'm just a team member here, uh, interfacing, uh, with investors and business people and you're going to hear from some later tonight. But, uh, that's, I would have loved to have a PowerPoint, but, uh, we love PowerPoints, don't we? But I, I think it's been in a, eh, 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 one last thing I would add, um, for economic development, the money is one thing, but the partnership means so much more for what we do. The fact that the city is our partner allows us to be in a space to talk about the great city we have, but also the opportunity of investment for companies that come here. And that's invaluable. And I think that over the last couple of years, through a lot of council members up here, the strength of that, the, that partnership has grown exponentially and it's grown because we've done a lot of projects together. And so if you, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gray. And I, uh, appreciate the partnership over, uh, the last several years of the contract. Uh, you've always been at the table. Uh, you know, we get all sorts of phone calls and people have interest in Lake Havasu City and it's, it's hard for us to carry that, uh, across the, the finish line, but, uh, volume over to, to James, he's able to, to work through and find the unique, um, nuances that might be with that company and, and see it through before it comes back for, for final council review or, uh, discussion, if that's the end game. So thank you for your partnership. Are there any comments or questions for members of the council before we open the public hearing? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Gray, can I just ask you a question? So when we have an investor, whether it's a small business, big business, can you just tell me how you determine which ones you're going to work with? And, and I know that's kind of a loaded question there because, but I do know there's agencies that come in here that you just don't work with for whatever reason, they're too small or you, they don't, they're not a match. But how do you vet that and determine?
Yeah, so, um, we do not vet. We work with everyone. And when I mean that, I've literally gone to a business owner's house and taught them how to start a Gmail account, to then start getting on an email to start, like, so we start at every place. If someone wants services from PED and contacts PED, we respond. That's the minimum. If they ask for services, now what we can and can't do with them, you know, we personally don't have entitlements, just like the city. The city can be in a development agreement, they can play in an infrastructure deal if they think it's going to benefit all the taxpayers and it's a great project. But for us, we're looking for things that are, we use the Arizona Commerce Authority. So if they're net new jobs, there's a pay threshold. So right now that's, uh, net new job in Mojave County, Lake Havasu is about 30,000. If you're paying over that with a percentage of, uh, health insurance, you can get up to 9,000. If it's rural manufacturing, we're working with someone right now, they've actually upped that game. Uh, if you're in a cluster for a rural manufacturer, you can get up to $20,000 per, uh, employee. So we use a lot of what the state is willing to pay, but that doesn't limit what we're willing to help people with. I hope that answers that. It's, because it's a wide range.
Yes, it does. And, um, I also read your contract. Your contract's a little bit different than the previous contract that we read and you really didn't have to give us a PowerPoint or.
The what?
You didn't really have to give us a PowerPoint, but you did because I, I looked at it today. You did send it in, it did come through Jess's report. So I did see what you were doing and I really appreciate it. There were a lot of updates. Um, in the future, maybe that would be nice for it to come and do that in front of the citizens, but according to the contract, this doesn't say that you need to do that. I think it says, uh, uh, I think you have to answer to the city manager quarterly reports, but the rest of the same thing was in the other contract is not the same in yours. So I do appreciate that.
And I would just add one more thing, um, in the quarterly report, that we do have a confidentiality line in there where we say, um, because in our model, we do sign NDAs, but we also have a general thing with our clients when we start working with them. We let them talk about what they want to do. That's not really our business to make an announcement. We're just trying to help them along the way. Now, when they say that, great, can we help any further? But, uh, honestly, um, PED over the last 10 years has become a real advocate of the investment, the business owner, it's really their story to say, so, um, that, that we're kind of held by that. That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from members of the council? Vice Mayor Lane?
I got to make one. So, um, Mr. Gray, yeah, you know, over the years, um, I used to sit on that board. I have been very critical of you. Uh, we've had some very in-depth conversations. We've had some very in-depth conversations. You've come a long way, I got to say, from the reimagining of the mall space out by Walmart to working with the city and bringing in Speed UTV and the Kmart building, all these things that you've already talked about, ALO Communications. But some of the big ones, this Nomadic is, when you brought that forward as part of America's Best Communities and a cowork location, starting up F-106, making that a success, to show that the Nomadic building could be successful. And in the first 100 days, you've made it successful. You and Amy have done such an awesome job. And First Fridays, you know, you showed that the downtown area can have a very vibrant nightlife to where other businesses have had to put staff on. I know that was Amy's thing. And I understand she's going to be leaving. She's a huge asset to this city, so we're going to miss you. So, but I think you guys are doing an awesome job over there with the amount of money that we're paying you now, you're putting it to good use. So thank you for the job that you're doing.
Appreciate the comments.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a statement. You guys are really going to have to change my mind on this one, okay? Because I'm pretty steadfast. The reason why I say this is quite a few years ago, when the PED started, my family was very involved in it. They invested a lot of money into the community for the Airport Business Center. They were offered this great industry that we're going to take this industrial property and we're going to make it into all of this. All these years, we've been paying, the taxpayers came in, they had an idea, this is what the money was going to go to, it's going to be Partners of Economic Development, mostly to bring to the business center down there. And again, it's really hard, because there's been several times that I have to look back and our family comes to me and says, boy, that was a bad deal. Where's my return on my investment? All I have is a building over there that's pretty, well, that Romer went into, and some Frito-Lays, and now we're renting part of it to ALO for a very reduced amount. We fast forward today, and I'm sitting with my father-in-law, and he says, what's happening with that Partners of Economic Development? I said, for all those years and all that investment, we have a metal building downtown on McCulloch. That's what we have. I know that they've helped some businesses along the way, but now the Partners of Economic Development took our downtown and built a metal building. That means anybody moving forward can build a metal building. I think that's one of the biggest mistakes that we did. I thought when the metal building was there that it was going to be wrapped in stucco, because that's the way, when I was a builder, you had to be consistent with what's surrounding you. Now, I've been there, and I like the concept. The concept's great inside, but I think Partners of Economic Development just devalued every building on McCulloch and the property. And I have to go back to my father-in-law and tell him that. And he said, never, ever, ever did I think that we were going to be spending money, our tax dollars and my investment on helping young entrepreneurs into reduced office space. He doesn't know the whole story, and I try to open it up. But I love this man, and he's very dear and near to me. And I know every one, I think several of my family members were on that board, and they dedicated their time, and they were presidents of the PED Board. They've done it all. Do you know what they say to me? Make it go away. It's not doing what it's supposed to do. And then even some of the board members that are there, I've asked them, and they said, there is no return in investment. I don't believe we're getting the half a million dollars worth of investment that we have. Now, I'm kind of tied a little bit, because I don't want Nomadic to fail. It's your tax dollars. So in the meantime, I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard spot. But you guys are going to have to convince me why it's so important that we continue a contract with PED.
Yeah, are there any additional comments from members of the council? And just for the record, that building was built to code, so the code does allow that to happen. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Mayor, council, once again, Sean Mullis. I am here before you to change your mind. I stand before you, the council, and everybody in this room as a PED success. Starting in 2018, I was looking towards a transition to move out of public safety. I spent over 22 years serving this community and the county as a firefighter, paramedic, and ended my career last year as a captain, paramedic, in the Kingman region. In that timeframe, I needed a plan once I retired. That plan was fostered and grown and loved by the PED. I am one of the first businesses that went into the F-106 development as a private contractor to grow my future. Because of the support, resources, affordable space for my business, and the time that not only James Gray and his staff dedicated to helping me, a small business owner, grow his business, I can tell you now that I am a successful business owner. I employ people in Lake Havasu City for both of my businesses that I do own. The resources that we generate through my business make this town better. Part of what I do with my media company is generating positive, community-oriented content that shows the world, and I say the world, because I've been part of projects that share this town with the world, that Havasu is not only one of America's greatest communities, it's one of the greatest places to visit, it's one of the greatest places to live, it's one of the greatest places to invest your money and your time. And I know that from your statement, that your negativity towards the PED comes from a risk that your family took with that investment. And I'm sorry that that risk that you took didn't work out for you. But if you take my success story and compound that with all the other success stories that come out of the PED, that come out of their programs, that come out of their willingness to try new things and to show new things to this community that we really need, that we didn't know we need, we're losing. I really support their efforts. I support everything that they do, because the only reason that I can make sure that my family has a roof over their head and afford to live in this town, that my employees have a living wage, that they can come to work and enjoy the things that PED puts on and all these other events, is because of their support. And I question you to say, to give me one example of another organization in this town that is completely dedicated to making sure either me, a small business owner with an idea and not really knowing what to do, to grow that, and also work with some of the larger organizations, such as ALO, such as Speed UTV, and bring those braggadocious resources to town that bring us jobs, that bring us infrastructure, that bring us tax dollars, that allow us to live the life in one of the best cities in America. So I understand that you have a personal grasp on this that may be different than other people. But I implore you that we, what the PE does and what they are doing and what they are growing, and even that beautiful metal building that they put downtown McCulloch, that's going to go next to a beautiful park eventually, is desperately needed and desperately needs to be supported, because there's no other resource, if you are a small business and want to start something substantial, to go to and have that opportunity and have that affordability in this town. So, thank you.
May I be up there to respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, because you may not know me, okay? But, and I don't know you, so that's fair. Well, first and foremost, I started Lake Havasu Songwriters Festival quite a few years ago. I never went to tax dollars. I didn't go, I went out to communities and asked for donations, kind of like that 501(c)(3) comments that we've had before. It's my tax dollars, I want to use it where I want to use it. And so in this case, I went out to business owners. They supported something that was pretty amazing, along with Cabernet and Canvas, where we united businesses within the community. With that, we donated over $100,000 to schools to save music and art programs through networking, communications, media, teaching them how to get online, songwriters and musicians, how to copyright their music and trademark their things, including branding and marketing at the highest level. We also did the Cabernet and canvases, which was a great unified source. That people came out, they had cocktails. We donated all that money to schools. Never once did I come knocking on the city's door, asking for a half a million dollars a year to keep me alive. I kept, I think networking is amazing. I think the downtown First Friday thing is beautiful. But we also have a Thursday night thing as well. And nobody, they don't, they're doing it. So we have events on McCulloch all the time. So again, I just, my disconnect is the half a million dollars a year for a networking group that should come together and through the businesses and the 501(c)(3)'s and the supporters and the sponsors should make this happen. And that's what my family did. I don't feel bitter, per se, about that. They're upset that they just don't think anything that they all, the original founders of the PED sat down and thought they were going to do, is happening today. They don't like the direction. They think personally that they would love to write a check, a sponsorship check, to you guys to keep you running, but they don't think it should be under tax dollars. Am I making better sense, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Lisa Kruger did sign up to speak. I'm sorry, I forgot to call on you. Did you still want to speak on this item, Lisa?
No, I didn't.
Okay, perfect, all right, sounds good. Mr. Fisher?
Yes, it's Bob Fisher again. So from the response, from the conversations with the leadership of the Go Lake Havasu and the PED, and the response of some of the spectators here who, once they got their word across, they all left, and the interactions here, it seems to me, there's a kind of a mutual admiration society goes on here, where they come in and lobby you folks for the money to do stuff that makes you all look good or something, I don't know. It just seems like it's an awfully expensive way to do that kind of thing. And it's not really free enterprise when you're picking losers, winners and losers on this kind of stuff, when you're free enterprise kind of thing, probably would do a better job. And as far as opportunities, there's vacant stores here in town. There's vacant properties that people can rent and so forth. It's not that they need help doing that, finding a place. There's lots of places to have a business. A lot of them went out of business in the last three years. So I just think it's a little too cozy of a relationship with what's going on and where our tax dollars are going with all that stuff. Thank you.
There was something in the contract that I read, and I forgot to mention it, on the Go Lake Havasu contract. So I was looking really quick to see if it was the same thing on the partnership for economic development contract. And it's just a really weird thing. I don't know, maybe you need to check all your other city contracts also. But it says that they are not supposed to employ unauthorized aliens. And I believe that, yes, it says unauthorized aliens. And I just thought that the terminology had recently changed over the last few years. And so I didn't know when to mention that, that your contracts may need to be updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Guess I'm the only one making motions today. Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the funding agreement with the Partnership for Economic Development, Inc. for the attraction, retention, and expansion of business on behalf of the city.
Hold a second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane. We have a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion?
My only discussion is that I would almost consider giving that tax money back to the citizens, because I'm not sure. That's just my opinion. I know which way this is voting, so it doesn't matter. But I just don't think it's a good return on our investment, that's all.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that, all right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 7.7. Approve the lease agreement with Havasu Community Health Foundation for property located in 1980 North Kiowa Boulevard to operate a food bank. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city and HCHF entered into an initial lease agreement for 1980 North Kiowa Boulevard in 2018 for the operation of a food bank. The current lease agreement expires on July 31, 2023, and HCHF expressed interest in entering into a new lease for this space. The proposed agreement would commence on August 1, 2023, and expire on June 30, 2033, subject to termination set forth in the agreement. The proposed lease rate is $550 per month, which equates to 25 cents per square foot, as in the last agreements that we talked about last week, actually. So city staff is recommending approval of this agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Gary? We also have the applicant here as well that I may want to say a few words. Councilmember Lane?
Yes, so I wasn't able to put any input in the lease that we had with the United Way, but I still am really not in favor of charging nonprofits, like the food bank or the United Way, with anything within city buildings, because I think that they give back so many services that are priceless. And I'm talking about those specific services that have to do with utilities and rent and food. I just don't think we should be doing that. But I think I, I'm curious of why this specific lease is for 10 years and the United Way one was only for three years, what the reasoning? And then I have another question. But I'm just curious of why United Way's three and this one's 10.
Yeah, so it really goes on the request of the organization. Ms. Gary reached out to United Way, which I'll just briefly talk about, because it's not on the agenda, for what they wanted to do, and that was the discussion. And Havasu Community Health Foundation requested a 10-year lease. And so that's really the difference.
So I did do my research, and I did call Debbie Pennington on the United Way, and she said that conversation did not happen. So I'm not here to, you know, agree or disagree. I was just curious of why, because she said that was not what was happening. She was presented with a three-year. And maybe that's because we're maybe moving forward and, you know, doing something with the fire station. I don't know, but I did reach out to her, and I am a board member on there, so I asked why. And I don't even know if they would have signed a 10-year. I was just wondering why that conversation didn't happen. And I just really want to put this out here. I don't know if everyone's aware of this, what the United Way does, but they collect grant money.
Yeah, but we're talking about the Havasu Community Health Foundation.
This is about the Havasu Community Health Foundation, because they're one of the receivers. They receive money from United Way. So, I mean, I want all of these organizations to work together, and I of course want this. But I just want everybody to understand, they all work together in unison. If we're going to do something fair, we have to do it fair. I'm not talking equal, but you have to do things fair. And so I'm 100% going to vote yes on this, but I just think the contracts have to be the same. If you're going to do it, for one, you do it for all, and we're renegotiating it. And I see we're still doing, you know, the 25 cents per square foot. And I'm not arguing any of that, I'm just saying, if we put a process in place, you know, all the factors need to be out there. But that conversation didn't happen. I spoke to Ms. Pennington right before I came here. That conversation didn't happen. So, but with that, I am absolutely supportive of this. I think the food bank does amazing, great things, like huge supporter. I, you know, I wish we weren't charging them anything.
So yeah, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gary, just to answer why we have to have, you know, kind of a base rent of some sort in a second. But I do know that, and I'm not trying to put words in Ms. Gary's mouth, but sent an email to Debbie, saying, here's the contract, what is your feedback? And that was the opportunity for them to come back with, I want a different term, I want this, I want that, whatever those things were. And again, we're here talking about the food bank with Havasu Community Health Foundation. They did ask for a 10-year. So Ms. Gary, if you want to talk just a little bit about the structure of why, because of the gift clause and those components that you mentioned in our previous discussion, when we had a similar agreement.
Actually, if we're going to go into that depth, I would rather go into executive session. I think we probably should have had that conversation in executive session. So I don't want to, I don't want to go back and rehash all that. So we've had the discussion on why we're doing 25 cents, and we're just trying to get everybody on the same page moving forward. As far as the years, it just happened when I sent the agreement to United Way, I drafted it based on the agreement that was the previous agreement and sent it, and there was no request for anything different. So that kind of went through. The request for the food bank to do theirs for an additional number of years came in after United Way, so I didn't even get to have the conversation to try to do those. And so presenting it to city council, food bank is asked for 10 years for their purposes, and that's for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions before the applicant speaks? Yeah, Ms. Seaver, did you want to say a few words about, all right, not the applicant, you're not the applicant, you're the other side of the lease.
Thanks, I'm Linda Seaver. I'm the Executive Director of the Havasu Community Health Foundation. We're 30 partners strong, and this is one of our most favorable. I'm the worst negotiator in the world. In 2018, Jess is laughing because he got me. I wanted some funds for our veterans' health awareness, and Jess and the past mayor, Nixon, called me and said, I think we might find some funds for you. And I said, okay. And I said, okay, come on over to the 94A coma and let's talk. And then I immediately called Ben LaParn because I knew Ben could help me with this. An hour later, because I had said no to the food bank when interagency failed, only because I didn't want to do something that I thought we would fail. And I, I've been a college administrator all my life and never operating a food bank. And an hour later, I had no funds for the veterans and I did have a food bank. At that meeting, our biggest concern was we have no location. And Mayor said, we do have a facility. Um, it does need improvement. So we decided that we would put, I think at that time around 40 is what we put in, but we ended up spending a lot more. We have since invested $58,000 in it. We've invested $20,000, $20,000 in maintenance and we have paid, um, rent of about $38,000. And we're proud to do that because we have to have some skin in the game. Uh, someone could come right along and take it out from underneath of us and we would have no place to go. Uh, last month, we served 1,200 families. Some of the families had five members in them and we did it with one staff, all volunteers. And I believe our record for the food was about 170 some thousand dollars for that one month. We can't pick up and go. A lot of offices can pick up and go, we can't do it. We need a place to get the big semis in. So we love it where we are. Um, we wish we owned it, but unfortunately we don't have the funds, but economic development. Anyway, um, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. That's why we asked for 10 years. We've got to have that stability. We're a little different. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Seaver. All right, are there any additional comments or questions for members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, um, here's a good example. We're charging these guys rent and what do they do for our community? They do a lot for our community. They lift people up in the worst times and each and every one of us in this room could be one step away from needing all their services, all of them. But in the meantime, we're giving half a million dollars for young entrepreneurs to succeed when I know that there's an ASU and MCC and all these opportunities and networking, I think within businesses could lift them up. So this is where I think Councilmember Moses and I sometimes disagree because he says we shouldn't lift up 501(c)(3)'s and those kind of services. And I'm saying we shouldn't be lifting up young entrepreneurs when they have all these educational avenues to get there. So, um, this is really tough for me that we're even, here we are. We're, we're charging some of the most important people in our community and we could all be one step away. And sometimes all they need is just to step up to get to the next place in their life, no different than the young entrepreneurs. They all need a little step up as well. I get it. But how much stepping up are we going to do, uh, with your tax dollars? Or when do we decide? You make that decision with the 501(c)(3)'s that are all over this community. We have a lot of them. Um, and I support a lot of them. So I'm really confused at this whole process, um, but we're going to do what we're going to do and I will definitely be voting for this contract. Because I really, if we can give the PED $500,000, we sure in the heck can support some of these, uh, 501(c)(3)'s that help people out of trouble.
Are there any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion? Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the lease agreement with Havasu Community Health Foundation for property located at 1980 North Kiowa Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 7.8, which is adopt resolution number 23-3675, adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 24 through 28. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This evening we have before you on this first item is the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan. We began this process some months ago. We've been through, um, two budget work sessions. At the last work session where we discussed the five-year CIP, um, we did, in going from that meeting to this meeting, there have been just a couple of changes between that five-year CIP and the one that we're proposing you adopt. Um, we found that we, it appears that we are likely to get additional SLIF, the State Lake Improvement Fund, funding. Um, so the Site 6 fishing dock that was scheduled for fiscal year 28, we moved that up to next year, FY24, um, in the amount of $1.5 million. Um, there was just a, a shift in some funding, not in the total on the Site 6 boat ramp replacement. Um, we, it's now 100% SLIF funded in the CIP. And then one thing that was included in the council communication was that it was determined that we would have a carryover, carry forward amount of $300,000. That means that we're not able to spend it by June 30. It was allocated in this year's budget, so we are going to carry it forward into the FY24 budget in the amount of $300,000 for channel dredging. So those are the differences between what you saw in May and what we're bringing you tonight. The five-year CIP plan totals $161.9 million. The FY24 total is $50.7 million. And all of the projects in the five-year CIP are fully funded that are included in the, in the, in the report. We do still have those items that we listed in red, um, that will be dependent upon the amount of funding that becomes available based upon any changes in the utility rates. But otherwise, that has not changed. And that is it for the five-year CIP. I did put together just a couple more slides so that you could see the total of the projects by category. So you can see the millions of dollars that are going into each of those. 10.2 million in total street projects. Did want to highlight that. Um, general government, nearly $12 million, including the, um, a fuel facility for police and public works. Finishing up the courthouse, um, Fire Station 7, the, the beginning of that process and then some, the police department facility and jail rehab. And then water and wastewater projects, um, total over almost $14 million. So there's that total of the $50.7 million that I mentioned previously. So with that, I will answer any questions or staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions for members of the council for Ms. Olson, for the team?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So I just want total clarification. I just pulled up the, the budget presentation that we were presented. So there are still items in red, correct?
That's correct.
So tonight us voting, we're going to vote on this budget based on things still being in the red?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the numbers, um, in red, so as Ms. Olson explained, uh, we have, we've been deficit spending in our utility rate funds. So those are enterprise funds, water and wastewater, uh, based on the utility rate study that we implemented in, uh, '21. And so we, we're going to get one full year of seasonality built into the system. We have seasonality based on, um, our visitation that comes in on owners of homes for, that just use the winter or owners of homes that just use the summer. Take one full year of seasonality, which got us to about October of last year, October of '22. Uh, in December, the council, um, hired, uh, Will Dan to come in and update the utility rate study. We're going through the public outreach at that point right now. Um, and we will then, uh, be determined on, on some sort of a plan to address the utility rates. Uh, because there's no certainty right now in this budget, there are items that are in red identified just as contingency items. Those are items that will not happen if we don't do anything different with the revenue sources that we have now. If we do things different, uh, with the revenue sources that we have now, which is anticipated, those items then would, um, would be able to move forward. They're not red as in deficit. They're red in to alert the council that without any action of us, we won't be able to do those items moving forward. So that's the clarification of the red that you see on that presentation from our last budget, uh, hearing. Is that, clarify that for you, Councilmember Lane?
It does. To me, it looks like it's leverage when we come to do the water rate study, that if we don't raise the rates here, then we can't get this done. And I don't want to pick and choose. I don't want to pick and choose projects that obviously have to be in here and some that are not even in here that we need. And then put that back on the taxpayers and say, hey, well, your water rates, they have to go up this way. And I don't know what that looks like until we discuss it. I just think it's, it's difficult for me to vote yes on this with having numbers in red contingent on what that rate, water rate study. So I just want to explain that so that my vote makes sense.
Sure.
Thank you.
That makes sense. And, uh, again, those red numbers just are not going to happen if we don't do some other revenue source. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember, uh, Campbell?
The ironic part about this is when I was campaigning to be on city council, it was all about IDD and water rate studies and what we're going to do. Fast forward how many years forward and we've debauchled this so bad that now I have this sitting in front of me. We have wastewater systems that we're losing, I don't know. I'm not going to give you the number, but it's not good. Let's just say we're going into our reserves every single day that we did not fix this water rate study. Back in the day, when the first or second pay, uh, bill that went out and we literally, um, gave HOAs absolute anxiety because overnight their bills went from $5,000 for their water and sewer bills to $10,000. And one, some went from $10,000 to $20,000 and that was their bills. I asked, please stop. Let's retro it back to July 1st, bring it all in house and fix it ASAP before we get to another budget session. Here I'm sitting, all these years later, I'm going to be campaigning again here pretty soon and this thing has not been taken care of and it's our water and infrastructure. We can talk about lifting up entrepreneurs and lifting up social services, but if we don't have water, sewer and trash, I just got back from Vietnam, those are the most important services up to fire and police. I'm really, really disappointed that we have this in front of me and it's, we, we just didn't handle it right. Thus why I voted no on some contracts today. I'm really upset about this for you. And how do I suppose, I'm not going to vote yes on this because it's not right. Because this is costing you guys millions. It's calling, costing you your infrastructure. So I'm sorry, but this is, one of my passionate buttons is infrastructure and what we need to do to keep the city moving forward and we've debauchled this.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, I will agree that, um, being in the red like this is not, uh, where we want it to be right now. I don't like the fact that, that we're in this position. We're in an enterprise fund, which means we don't take money from the general fund and put it into it. We don't take money from it and put it into the general fund. However much money it costs to run our wastewater and our freshwater systems have to come from the rate payers. And when we did this last rate study, um, what we found was the people that, that lived in HOAs weren't paying their fair share. Um, that they were, um, paying way less than what typical homeowners were paying. And when we did the rates, we found out that, um, it caused a lot of anxiety, as Councilmember Campbell said, for those HOAs. So we went into the, the red and used some of our reserves to cut back to try to give them a time and opportunity to be able to, um, fix their rate so that they could come up so they're paying their fair share like everybody else is. Now we're at the, as the mayor said, that one-year study where we see where those rates are at. And so we are doing a study on our rates and our wastewater rates to ensure that we have the money to be able to fund, uh, all of the systems and the repairs and the maintenance on these. We don't have to look very far to see, um, what happens when you don't. We read things in the paper all the time about water systems that are failing. You can like ride across the lake, they're still on bottled water because they didn't maintain their system. There was an article in the paper today about Horizon 6 having to redo their system just so that they can have fire service. We can't have failures in the, these two, um, uh, funds. We can't. We have to have it so that when you push that handle and all the bad stuff goes away, the pipes don't break, it goes to the system and we treat that water. When you turn on the faucet, we need to make sure that all of our citizens can have fresh water. That's why we're doing this study right now again, to make sure after one year that we're making sure that all of the people are paying their fair share. And a lot of it had to do with the, um, the people that live in the condominium type complexes that weren't paying their fair share. And we are subsidizing that and that's why we're in the red. So I think it's very important that we move forward with our five-year plan. And then if we, through this rate study, if we decide to fully fund our enterprise fund and be able to do all these projects, then that's what we'll do. If not, then we won't fund everything and we will have deferred maintenance down the road, which as you all know, I don't like. But this is an enterprise fund. All the money has to come from that just, and that's only one small part of the CIP. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
All due respect, it was under the narrative of somebody that said that the water, um, all the HOAs are paying not their fair share, but obviously they didn't deserve to go almost 100% up in some places. They didn't deserve to be bankrupt. They deserved an answer and they've been asking for a year, how do we do our budgets? They're governed also. They have to put a budget in place. You know what's happening? They're deferring their roof maintenances. They're deferring everything because they're wondering what the council's going to do to them next. In the meantime, what did we do? We, um, cut the prices. We were just pulling numbers out of the sky, which was completely, I don't think fiscally responsible. And here we are today. We're in this situation. We, I have this sitting in front of me. All these projects in here, I would rather them all focus, go over to public works. I know that you, we can transfer some of the things like the debt services, but again, I'm not going to have these conversations. It's not going to happen. All I'm going to say is I cannot move forward on the CIP. I feel very sorry for the HOAs and how they've been treated for the last year, wondering what they're going to do and how they're going to pay their bills. And they also have to go out to vote if it's anything over 5%. So, um, we, and on top of it, on that water rate study, we reduced the water rates for restaurants and hotels. The same tourists that we're talking about earlier, coming into our community and using all of our services, we gave them a break. Well, we turned around and we double charged almost the HOAs. So, um, I don't know if anybody's listening, probably not, but I hope my constituents are listening and understand I have your back. I just can't get anywhere right now, including a lot of the staff that are stuck having to deal with these red lines all through their departments and not wondering what they're going to do next. And when the next failure happens in your front yard, what they're going to be able to do to fix it for you.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, it's, uh, a no vote on the CIP budget is going to take $13 million investment in total wastewater and water projects as proposed for this next fiscal year. So if we don't pass that, that's, that's investments. $10.2 million in roadways. We heard both of those this evening. This, we're talking about a really small component and we keep talking about we're, we're in the red, we're deficit spending. We knew that. This is no surprise. The, the, uh, council in, uh, the last rate study said, we want the rates to be charged based on the cost of service, the cost to deliver those services. So what does it cost to deliver to a hospital, to a hotel, to a restaurant, to a single-family residential home, to a condo? That was what we said and the rate study that came back identified what all of those things were. So you've repeated several times that, uh, we just needed to stop, revert and go back to what it was. We couldn't legally do that. You have to post for 60 days if there's a rate increase. That, that was not what could happen and those HOAs needed immediate relief. We all knew at that time that we were going for a one-year of, of stability so we could see what the system does, go back out for utility rate study, which is what we're doing. We just had a public outreach and 36 of the HOAs attended that meeting so that they could be part of the conversation on how we can address this going forward. be part of the conversation on how we can address this going forward, and that's what we're doing right now. So doing a very small component, when we're talking about red and red, red numbers on a, on a piece of paper, it's, it's not red. Those items are not going to happen if we don't do something to the revenue source, which we will be addressing in some sort during this, this process. But we wanted to have a lot of outreach with our communities, so, and our ratepayers so they could be part of the solution. So it's, it's not that there were spending money that we don't have, it's that we won't spend that money if we don't have it. But we do have $13 million in investments that are going to happen this year. Uh, Mr. Knutson, do you have some comments you would like to make?
Yeah, please, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and just kind of maybe, uh, alleviate some of the, the, uh, possible confusion that that might be out there. Um, we've presented, um, we've, we've looked at as, as, as a council, as a staff, as a city, we've looked at numbers over the course of last four years that show projections in year five and six at the time that we are, the use of reserves is occurring. And, uh, and if we move forward, if we advance the, uh, the projects forward, uh, years five and six, we're going to go into the red. There'll be a zero balance in the wastewater and water funds. Um, and then three years ago, obviously that, and that number jumps up a little bit. And, and we identified, um, uh, projects each and every year, uh, Public Works, uh, team and, and, um, you know, our, uh, our water division or our wastewater division, they identify projects that are needed. This is a replacement of pipes and booster station backups and, and other things. There was an item on the agenda later today, um, that, uh, that are needed. Um, so we identified that those types of projects to move forward. Now, this year, in terms of the, the red ink that was identified through the budget work session, that, that was my direction because I need to highlight the fact that if, if there aren't any adjustments with the rates, this is how water and wastewater services are funded by Lake Havasu City, and if there aren't any adjustments with rates, the, the rate revenues don't match the projects that are needed to sustain the system. So I need to highlight that in, in terms of, of, of a, a presentation to the council, to the public, and, and, um, and try to tie projects that are needed to the rates that are required to pay for those projects. So, uh, I asked, uh, Mr. Frosley, I asked, uh, our superintendents within, uh, water and wastewater to take an objective, uh, perspective, a view of what it is within the budget that says if rates aren't, uh, adjusted, then what projects, uh, float to the top and which projects would have to be looked at a little bit differently. Uh, we wanted to make sure that those projects were still within the budget. They're in the budget. There's red inked there because we wanted to identify the fact that these projects will not advance without an adjustment to the, to the rates. So that, so that, that's the reason for why those projects are in red. They're not because of any other thing other than they're in the budget, but they're not fully funded for the budget. It's pending the approval of the council to, to, to advance the utility rate study and the adoption of the, of the rates. So I just want to put that out there too. Um, that, that was my direction, to identify those projects in red ink so they stick out like a sore thumb, so we can tie those projects to the conversations we're going to have, uh, that we have had and are going to have when it comes to the utility rate study.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Mayor, just one more thought, maybe a solution?
Councilmember Campbell?
Okay. I was told that yes, this is an enterprise fund, but one thing that we can fund out of the general fund is the debt service, the interest portion. Is there a way that we can transfer $13 million, because that's our debt service, into this enterprise fund per, I mean, I'd have to get better legal advice on that, but my legal advice was pretty good, that said the general fund can fund debt services, which is the $13 million, moving a lot of these projects forward and giving certainty to the, our roads and our, our infrastructure. Do you see what direction I'm going? Speaking of reserves, where we can find it? Find it for now, fix these roads, get, get these projects on the books and hopefully, uh, get the rate study taken care of.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, uh, trying to bring a solution. I think the solution is that we get the rate study and take it seriously and, and, and get that, that changed as it comes through. We don't have $13 million in excess in the general fund right now to make a transfer from that to an enterprise fund to do that. Our contingency in the budget as is proposed in the general fund right now is a million dollars. A million dollars for contingency that would happen throughout, uh, the entire year. So we don't, we don't have $13 million to, to move over to address it, and it's not sustainable to have, uh, your enterprise funds be, be done through general fund dollars or other tax revenues. That's why they're enterprise funds, so the money's coming in or intended to be used to spend for those types of items. So we have a solution. We know the solution. I don't know why, I'm, I'm really just kind of surprised that we're having this conversation like, like we didn't know, because this is what we agreed to do as a council, was to deficit spend as we go through the process. We've hired the, the firm to do the utility rate studies. We're doing the outreach right now with ratepayers and, uh, proposals will be forthcoming for us to address that. Again, as Mr. Knutson mentioned, I mean, I'm looking at, uh, the May 11th, uh, budget hearing, uh, documents that were here, that they're in red saying on hold, uh, pending. I mean, it gives us the numbers and everything. We're still investing $13 million in this budget. All of the numbers are in the budget. In years two, three, four, and five of the CIP might have to be adjusted if we don't have in there, but there's on hold vehicles and, and equipment are on hold if we don't address this. But by the time that we put all of this together, we're going to have to take into consideration elements we don't even know that are, are going to be a component, like implementation. If it's really going to hurt HOAs, whatever the outcome is, we need to give them time. And so we'll give them time. The, the conversation I remember is having is that we are going to make this equitable for all ratepayers, and we're going to have that conversation with all of those users. And so we don't know the outcome, but city staff would be remiss if they didn't share that with us as the policymakers, to have that information available so we know going into it. But by not, uh, uh, passing a CIP because we, we directed as council how this process was going to go on and, and now not be able to invest in the other things that we're looking to do. Again, the $10.2 million in roads, the $13 million in water and wastewater, the airport projects that Ms. Olson highlighted a few minutes ago, they're all here in our packet and the, the display in front of us. We know what we're doing, so I'm a little surprised that this is, it's coming as, it's a surprise to us because it's just not. This is what we've been doing the entire time, and we knew that's what we were doing. So, uh, with that, are there any other comments before we open the public hearing?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I'm not surprised. I just haven't agreed with the process of where we are. So I mean, that, that's, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with the consensus, but I didn't agree to do, doing this. So that's why the vote is the way that I'm voting.
Sure, yeah. You need to do what you need to do. All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to adopt resolution number 23-3675, adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, the next item is, uh, item 7.10, adopt resolution number 23-3674, approving a minor gen, oh, sorry, no, we're on item 7.9. Adopt resolution number 233676, adopting the fiscal year 2324 tentative budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated tonight, we are looking at adopting the tentative budget. Um, there have been just a few changes from the last time you looked at this budget in May. Those changes, um, are reflected in the council communication and in this presentation. We now, with the adoption of this tentative budget, we are capping the amount of money that we are able to allocate for the fiscal year '24 at that $228,632,955 amount. We can change numbers within that. We can lower our budget. We can shift dollars around within that amount, but this will set the cap. And the final budget adoption that occurs on June 27th, that amount cannot be higher than what the tentative budget is adopted at. Some changes since the May proposed budget session with council. Again, I had mentioned before, the $300,000 carryforward for the channel dredging project, um, in, in addition to the 1.5 million for the Site 6 fishing dock in the SLIF funds. Um, we went back and trued up and made sure we had the most current wage and benefit information. Um, so we added that. The, in just recently, the contract renewal for Haven came up in the police department, and it came in $10,000 higher. Um, so we did add the $10,000 to the budget just so we would have that allocation in place. And then water and wastewater revenues, we revised just as, just as we discussed before, we wanted to include at least a placeholder revenue amount. It's, it's not indicative of any result of the current rate study. We just wanted to make sure that there were reasonable revenues in there to offset the allocations that we've included. They're included, yes, they're listed in red, as you explained very well, thank you. Um, they're included, but we wanted to make sure that the allocation was going to be sufficient so that when and if we do raise rates, we'll be able to spend the additional revenue. So those changes were made. Um, the, again, just as a reminder, the property tax rate is remaining the same. There is an increase, um, in the assessed valuation of the properties within the city as assessed by the Mojave County. Um, so we will, that will create additional revenue. The increased valuation will, um, generate an additional $275,000 in property tax revenue. And then new construction, um, makes up about an additional $84,000. So with that, those are all the changes since the last meeting, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Ms. Olson, and, uh, thank you to your team and, and all of the department heads at the city who have worked tirelessly on this budget. Council gets involved at this time around, uh, February during our annual planning session, but, uh, the team has started working several, several months before going through and identifying what, uh, the needs are, uh, what the, the fund balances are going to be and what the opportunities we have. Uh, you know, this is a, a budget that we can be proud of. This is a budget that, um, has, it's fiscally responsible, there's no tax increases, we're able to keep our property tax rate flat for the sixth year in a row, uh, which is, is very good news as Ms. Olson described. We still will have to have that truth in taxation hearing, uh, because we will have some additional revenues based on the new construction and some, some valuations, uh, but the, the tax rate again will remain the same. We're able to make some, uh, critical investments that are important to our community, including $10.2 million in roadway, uh, work within Lake Havasu City. Uh, that's on top of the state funding for redoing Highway 95. Uh, Fire Station 7, uh, Chief Plowess and his team worked hard on the fire study and identified, uh, that the need is there for Fire Station 7. The location that has been planned for many years is the correct location. We're going to be able to do that and pay cash, um, doing so. We're going to be able to finish the courthouse that we started and again, use cash, uh, doing so. The island walking path, we're going to be able to get that redone. A lot of citizens love that walking path, but it's, uh, uh, in quite disrepair. We're going to be able to redo that, again, paying cash for, for that item. We're going to be able to make great, uh, investments in our infrastructure. Uh, we've been able to do a secondary freshwater supply. We've been able to, uh, work on wastewater improvements, lots of amazing things. We're also going to be able to invest in our team members so that we're going to be able to take care of them and, and, uh, with a market, uh, wage stabilization to ensure that they're not, uh, taken, uh, by other agencies. Uh, one of the great things about Lake Havasu is our location. We have a very great location to other metropolitan areas, but that means we're really close to those areas and, and some of our team members can still live in this beautiful community and work in other, um, jurisdictions, so we have to, to keep and recognize that. We're able to invest in that. Again, doing all of this with no debt financing, paying cash and not increasing taxes. I mean, this is something that we've all worked very, very hard on through good stewardship to be able to present this, uh, type of a budget going forward. And I know we've had lots of discussions and public hearings, um, at the council, um, and, uh, the planning session to be able to get to this point, uh, but it's, um, a great budget, I think, again, you, Ms. Olson, and, and your team in, in budget finance, as well as you, Mr. Knutson, and, and your team for all the hours you've spent on this. Would, uh, do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson or members of the team?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I just want to thank everybody that worked on this budget. I know they've worked due diligently, every single person, all of our staff has done an amazing job. Why we have this budget in front of us and the debacle, it's, I feel it's our fault, not theirs. And I apologize because they're kind of stuck in the middle of this issue that I wish we would have resolved prior to this budget, uh, point, that's all. So I personally am apologizing to the citizens and all of you out there that you got stuck because we, we couldn't get it right. So, sorry.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, uh, what's been said about all the hard work that went into the budget. Um, we've talked for years and years about the, the need for the courthouse. Now it's going to be, actually going to open up later this year. Uh, the fact that we needed another fire station, and we're going to start working on that this next year. Um, they were able to put, uh, $500,000 for Parks and Recs for our ballfields for our kids. Uh, there's lots of good things that are in this budget with no borrowing of money, no raising of taxes. Uh, you hear how other areas are in deficit and we are not. Uh, we are being good stewards of the tax dollars and making sure that we're funding the things that the people say they want funded. As the mayor said, an extra $10 million into the roads this, this year, uh, the, the fire station, those are, those are big ticket items, and we have the money to pay cash for all that. So, uh, great job, uh, Mr. Knutson, uh, and the staff for all the work that you guys have done on this. Uh, it's, I see why you guys win awards for all of your, uh, accounting every year. You guys do an awesome job. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
I don't, sorry, I don't know if this is the right, uh, it's on Toy. I don't know if this is the...
Yeah, Ms. Toy, if you could just wait to the microphone, thank you.
I don't know if this is the right, uh, council meeting I'm supposed to ask this question at, but I saw in the paper today, the truth in taxation hearing notice of tax increase in compliance with the section 42-17107 Arizona revised. It says in here that your intention is to raise proper, prime, property tax, taxes over last year's level. Lake Havasu City is proposing an increase in primary taxes of $275,363 or 4.5%. I guess the English in all this confuses me when you're sitting here saying you're not going to increase taxes, but then this says you are going to increase taxes.
You know, thank you for the question. Ms. Olson covered that, and then I did as well when I, uh, mentioned that, uh, we are not increasing the tax rate, uh, but we still will have to have our truth in taxation hearing because we'll be generating additional revenue because of the new construction. So there, the valuations of, of vacant land is different than improved land, and so the increase of that's approximately $80,000, as, uh, Ms. Olson, uh, reported. And then the balance of the increase in revenues is based on assessed valuation of property home values going up, uh, either collectively within our community or individually based on, uh, the numbers that are provided to us by the county.
So, yeah, that went all over my head. I'm not wearing enough hairspray. The, what, I'm...
So tax, tax rate stays the same, revenue is going to increase by about $275,000?
Because the property value increased, so you're getting more money from our, isn't that what happened last year and you promised to try to lower it?
We addressed this at the very first public hearing on the budget, just to make sure everyone was clear. I do believe you, you were involved in, in those, those hearings and, and it was very clear we were going to keep the tax rate the same. Uh, we didn't promise that, but I know you, you really wanted us to do that. Uh, but that...
I believe Mr. Moses did promise that he would try to do that, yes.
Yeah, we'd had those discussions. So you can go back and watch, uh, the, the meeting and, and see the discussions that were had at the very first budget hearings.
Okay. Thank you. But I just...
Thank you.
Didn't know when the proper time was to ask that question.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Mayor, we did, uh, bring the taxes down a little bit to certain districts. You know, we did take some of that money that did go up and we gave it to, uh, pay off like $67,000 for certain businesses all on McCullough, including a Wheeler Park, that they didn't deserve to be taxed additionally over the top. So we did the little bit that did go up, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we did absorb some of that to help out some of the businesses on McCullough because we all use that median, and it just doesn't seem fair that a business way far away should, on a contract that they did with somebody a long time ago. So again, I know it did go up a little bit, but we did actually give some money back to the taxpayers as well.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion and possible motion. Uh, the one element when I, uh, mentioned, uh, some of the items that we should, could be proud of within this budget is our budget stabilization reserve is also, uh, doubled. So we were able to double it over the last couple of years. So some, some jurisdictions call it a rainy day fund. We call it, uh, um, in ca, we call it a budget stabilization reserve, but we do that in case there's a downturn in the economy that we have the ability to react without, uh, being harmful to the taxpayers or the users of the service that, uh, we're providing. So that's another benefit of this budget. Uh, are there any additional comments, uh, for members of the council or entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I move to adopt resolution number 23-3676, adopting the fiscal year 2023 through 24 tentative budget.
Second.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
All right, that will bring us to item number 7.10, ID 23-3776, adopt resolution number 23-3674, approving a minor general plan amendment, changing the future land use map of the city's general plan for 6600 and 67, 6600 and 6700 Chenoweth Drive, the south half of APN's 120-03-043 and 042 from employment to high-density residential. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council, thank you. Here's the area map. The subject property is a total of five acres and are located on the east side of Highway 95, on the north side of Chenoweth Drive. They consist of the southern halves of two parcels and are currently vacant and undeveloped. They're located within the city sewer service area, but are within Epcor's utility water service area. The city does not provide water service to these properties. All the abutting properties are undeveloped. The properties are currently zoned agricultural preservation and industrial. The abutting properties are zoned manufactured home, agricultural preservation, and industrial also. The current general plan shows the abutting properties to the north and west have a general plan designation of high-density residential. The property to the south across Chenoweth Drive is designated as commercial and as well as low-density residential, and the property to the east is designated as employment. Now, the growth projections and capacity section of the general plan suggests that changes to the plan may be approved if the proposals are consistent with the other goals and policies of the general plan. Within Lake Havasu City's incorporated area, there are about 2,500 acres currently designated as employment use. One could make a strong argument that a city our size would not anticipate the need for more than 2,500 acres dedicated to employment industrial-type uses. Couple this with the lack of land dedicated to workforce housing being a problem for many cities in Arizona, including Lake Havasu City. This proposal asks the city to consider altering our philosophy regarding housing in this specific area by changing the general plan designation to high-density residential, paving the way for a zoning to begin addressing the housing shortage. The requested high-density residential land use designation allows primary uses such as single-family residential, townhouses, apartments, as well as manufactured home parks. In December of 2021, the city council approved a general plan amendment for 39 acres of abutting property, here shown and outlined in yellow, from employment to high-density residential for development of a manufactured home park. The applicant's letter of intent asks to amend the city's general plan to add these subject five acres to the existing previously approved 39-acre project for a future manufactured home park. This general plan amendment is the first step in the process of developing the property. The applicant has also submitted a request for rezoning the property and to an appropriate residential zoning district, which is the next item on your agenda. At this point, the commission is asked to determine whether the requested general plan amendment is appropriate. And the planning commission heard this request at its May 3 meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. The applicant is also in the crowd. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Morris? Councilman Lane?
Yes, I don't know if Luke can answer this or maybe somebody in public works. So I'm, I'm understanding that they're located on the city sewer service, but they're within Epcor utilities. So is it, what is the impact? What would the impact be on our sewer services? Like, what would that impact look like?
That impact, well, they would have to, they'd have to develop city sewer for the property. And that's something they'll have to work into their design when they begin the development process for, as well as the water, the sewer and water. So city sewer, they'll have to design that into their project and they'll have to deal with that. And there is, my understanding is, capacity for that within our current projects, within our current infrastructure, at the processing end of it.
Okay, and I think what I'm, maybe I'm not asking it the right question. What is the actual impact on our employees, on our staff, on our own ability to take care of that area?
I believe we have the staff for that.
I just want to know if we're putting more, if we're going to develop this?
Yes.
And the water part, okay, that makes me happy. But as of what, what more pressure are we putting on our system, on our staff, on everything if we allow this?
Yeah, absolutely, a great question. And if you recall, this, this item was brought back before the council, a little more than a year ago, I believe, right? 12 to 15 months ago, where there was a general plan amendment. At that time, we had, we had a direction provided by the council, including by Councilmember Koch and others that, on the council is, what are the impacts to the cost of our sewer system in relation to this project? And they should be paying their fair share with regards to the development of the project. So all those comments coming from council resonated with staff and we continue those conversations moving forward. There is a wastewater master plan that the cities, the city went through that process, a large process, and identified future improvements for that, for that area. In the meantime, they can tap into the existing system and to start the, start the project. But long-term, there's going to be impacts to the system. The city will have to invest in that area, depending on what happens with the adjacent property owners all throughout. That whole area should be developing like gangbusters, honestly. But it's very frank to say that Epcor has not been a viable option for the property owners out there. There are property owners that are investing in infrastructure and so forth, and they're not getting cooperation from Epcor. If that takes off, the city will have to invest into a large, a large investment into that wastewater system. And the conversations that we've had with the applicant and to date, that were also heard at the last council meeting and will continue when we get into the permitting process, is that there are, it is their financial responsibility to pay their, their fair share towards the, what's needed for the sewer system in that area. A very long-winded conversation, but there's a lot there, right?
But there we are in the conversation of what their fair share is, right?
Yeah, so right now we're talking about zoning. So, and so what, we have a general idea of what, what that looks like. We'll require the developer to take a close look at the design of their system from a sewer standpoint and what are the, what are the impacts on our system? So that's, that's on them. They submit that, that plan. Our engineering team takes a look at it and make sure that we're in good shape and any impacts to our system for this project. We have to find a way to, to figure out what that, that is percentage-wise for the, for the future improvements for that entire area. But that would be borne by the, by the developer as part of the permitting phase.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Are there any other questions for members of the council, for Mr. Morris? Yeah, Mr. Morris, does the applicant want to make a presentation or is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. I'm not sure if they're prepared for a presentation, but...
Did you have any remarks at all or just your... Okay, perfect, okay, excellent. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
I think one thing that's been overlooked is that Chenoweth Drive, that section of it is the road to the dump. And there's a lot of heavy trucks and noisy traffic that goes up and down that road all the time and putting high-density housing right there on that road. I don't think it's a very good idea. Furthermore, the little smear at the very top center of that picture is that brand-new runway you guys were talking about earlier. And this is right under the flight path of that runway. And you're putting high-density housing in a high-noise area under that flight path of the runway, which is not a good idea to protect the runway and the airport from all the complaints. Now, the people who want to do this development have waved their arms and given you an argument that, oh, we're going to tell people there's a runway there and there's airplanes there and on and on and on, yada, yada, yada. They're not going to be here answering the phone when people call you guys up and complain about an F-35 that comes in for a touch-and-go landing or a helicopter that comes over their house because the guys from the marine base have flown up here to have lunch. You're going to wind up with complaints to the point where you will have to disallow the military traffic that uses this airport and that will be a big deal to the people that run the facilities on the airport. So I think it's foolish to put high-density housing right under the runway within a mile or a mile and a half of that airport and create this hazard of the noise for the people who are going to try to live there. I see there's some stuff out there already that's been developed and it's even closer. And I don't know, I don't know how they stand it, but the noise going over my house, which I'm two miles further away, it's noticeable when one of those airplanes comes in. And personally, I like airplane noise. I've been in aviation for years and years, but not everybody does. And so I don't think you're going to wind up with a peaceful, happy workplace. What do you call that? Workforce housing out there? It's not going to be all that nice. And right next to it, on the right side of that picture, those two little parcels out there, that's a junkyard. I don't know what the residents out there are going to think about being next door to a junkyard. So you're going to wind up having to mitigate that and get that moved out of there in order to satisfy the local people that want to live out there. So it's not a good place to put your high-density housing. I'm sure there's better places and using that for employment and industrial is a much better choice. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the council? Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent in this. And I wanted to follow up on a few items. First of all, the area that's brown up there right now, the HDR, is already approved. There is a project planned, the villages at Victoria Farms, and this is the same project. So that's already existing. In addition, on that bottom five acres that we want to change the general plan designation, that was a huge mess. And if you've been out there, the developers have already cleaned that all up. It's completely clean. They moved lots, I mean, so much stuff, trucks and trucks of junk that was out there. So that's been really great for this. And lastly, the Department of Real Estate requires disclosures for airplane stuff. So this property and these owners have to disclose through the Department of Real Estate that there are airplane traffic going through here. This is not unusual. So there won't be any developers woo-hooing their hands and pretending it's not there because the state does require that on all of their contracts. That disclosure has to be on there. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a fallback. I do recognize what the gentleman's saying, some people might complain, but there is a backstop for that issue. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant, for members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other question. If Epcor decides not to make a deal with them, then they can't really do anything, correct?
Correct, and if the applicant wants to address that.
So Epcor, they are working with Epcor right now and they're actually making some progress. So if Epcor says that they cannot serve the area, I mean, clearly the area has to have water. So if a certificated service provider of a CNN cannot provide you service, the Arizona Corporation Commission, I believe, does allow you to provide your own. I have no idea what that would look like. And I don't, I don't know how close the city's water service area, but the options would be greatly limited if Epcor could not do it. So that's a fundamental need of any development.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to address the council during this public hearing? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council. So the item in front of us here is for a general plan amendment. As the applicant mentioned, the 39 acres has already been changed in the general plan and zoned. They're just looking for five acres, which will become a little bit more clear in the companion item that will be next of why they need to do that process. This is coming to us with a recommendation of seven to zero from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any comments or questions for members of the council? Entertain a motion? We just closed the public, wrapped it up, now it's back to us.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to adopt resolution number 23-3674, approving a minor plan, minor, minor general plan amendment, changing the future land use map of the city's general plan for 6,600 and 6,700 Chenoweth Drive, the south half of APN's 120-03-043 and 042 from employment to high-density residential.
Second? We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now hear the companion item, item 7.11, adopt ordinance number 23-1309, approving a planned development rezon for 6590, 6600, and 6700 Chenoweth Drive and 1,800 and 2,000 Victoria Farm Roads, Victoria Farms Road, from manufactured home, agricultural preservation, and industrial to public lands and facilities to accommodate a water well and storage and to manufactured home planned development district to allow end-to-end parking spaces. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you again. The subject property, in this case, is just over 44 acres. And they're located east of Highway 95 between Chenoweth Drive and Victoria Farms Road. They consist of five separate properties that are currently vacant and undeveloped. The abutting properties to the northwest are home to storage units in the Havasu RV Resort. A small storage yard is developed to the northeast. The balance of the abutting properties are undeveloped. The property is currently zoned manufactured home, agricultural preservation, and industrial. The abutting property is zoned agricultural preservation, light industrial planned development, and industrial. 39 acres were already rezoned to, from manufactured, or for manufactured home park in December of 2021. That area is outlined in yellow. The applicant proposes to add about five acres to these 39 acres of the previously approved property, rezoned property. A water treatment and storage facility is shown near the northwest corner as outlined in green. This property is within Epcor's water service area and the rezoning of this .38-acre portion of the development is to P1 zoning, which will facilitate Epcor water infrastructure for the project. The request is also to add these five acres at the bottom, two and a half acres from AP to our manufactured home planned development and another two and a half acres from industrial to residential manufactured home planned development. They're asking for a planned development because they're asking for an exception to end-to-end parking spaces for the development. We'll be more about that exception later in the presentation. The applicant's site plan shown here shows 294 manufactured home rental spaces. The main gated entrance is proposed from Victoria Farms Road near the north, excuse me, southwest corner of the property. A secondary gated access is shown near the northeast corner of the property. An emergency access is at the south portion of the property. The site plan also shows a clubhouse and other amenities. A traffic impact analysis was reviewed by the Public Works Department and they found no traffic concerns from the proposed development. The analysis was for a five-year forecast that included other potential future developments within the area. The traffic level of service will remain at an acceptable level. The need for off-site improvements such as street widening, curb, gutters, sidewalks, and all other requirements will be provided upon development of the property. The property owner's engineering team is also working to complete a drainage analysis and preliminary design to accommodate and reduce the impact of floodplain flows across the property. An internal driveway and drainage channel are proposed to encroach onto the abutting property. Those are shown here in red. The property owner will enter into and record an access and drainage agreement with the abutting property owner to allow for those encroachments. And here's the reason for the planned development. The proposed manufactured home development meets all the city's development codes except for one exception request. The manufactured home developments require two parking spaces per unit. The applicant proposes two parking spaces per unit, but is asking for the spaces to be end-to-end rather than side-by-side. This style of parking is typical, typical of many manufactured home developments, but is not specifically allowed in our development code. Therefore, they're asking for this exception. Staff supports the requested exception. The planning commission heard this request at its May 3 meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. And just as a note, if for some reason the council elects not to approve this PD rezon request, you may want to reconsider the preceding request about the general plan amendment. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there questions for Mr. Morris? Before we bring the applicant up, does the applicant have a presentation on this item?
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, city council members. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. I don't have a specific presentation and Luke did a great job identifying everything. This is similar to the previous approval that was there. Even though we're adding an additional five acres, the overall density for the site was reduced, so there are less spaces available. The end-on-end parking, I was surprised when we first came here, wasn't in allowed use here. So I'm hoping that you will see that there's no adverse impact with that. It really is a, just a, you know, configuration on the lot to allow for the parking. I'm not sure why you don't already allow it. This site layout here, also by adding the additional five acres, it gives a... This site layout here, also by adding the additional five acres, it gives an outlet to the drainage facility. As you can see, the drainage channel comes down, it drops down into that five acres and around, so it really provides a nice flow location for the floodplain. The location up, that blue area up there is another rezoned portion. That would be the proposed water well that we're working with Epcor right now with the project engineer on that. We feel good about this project, and I hope that you will approve it this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. I did have one question, maybe for Mr. Morris first. Are these the two squares where that pop-out bubble says driveway and drainage channel? That's one, that's two and a half acre parcel next to the other two and a half acre parcel?
Oh, thank you for the question. That two and a half, those five acres with those two, two and a half acre parcels are in this area.
The south half.
Yeah, the south half of this square is a subject property that was, went through the general plan amendment. That five acres is there.
Perfect.
And this, these are the two, two and a half acre pieces that are asking to be rezoned now to the manufactured home. I can go back to a previous slide, maybe that shows it. So this is where we're talking about, these two, two and a half acre pieces.
Okay, so it looks like in addition to the drainage easement, you also need a roadway easement against, across someone else's property?
Yes.
That's correct.
There's a roadway and a drainage easement that they'll have to acquire from the adjacent property owner.
Okay, and is the adjacent property owner, are they supporting?
Are they aware of this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and are they supporting that?
Just working with them directly. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and the, it says they're rental spaces, so are these, are these rental homes that you guys are going to put manufactured homes on and then rent them out? Or do you rent out the land and then somebody buys a mobile home?
Both. Well, we have the owners here, so I'm looking at them for this last question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, yes.
Hi, Ron. Evan Bernstein. I'm a co-founder at Castle Park, the developer. So typical manufactured housing community, we're renting the spaces. We're purchasing around 30 million of manufactured homes to bring in.
I'm sorry, I missed that number?
Thirty million.
Thirty, oh yeah.
The total project development cost is going to be around 55 million, around 20 million for the actual site work, 30 million for the actual homes bringing in. We're purchasing the homes, bringing them in, and hopefully selling the majority of them. We may have some as rentals, depending on the affordability. Sometimes renting is more affordability than actually buying the home and financing, but we're planning on utilizing both methods to lease up the community.
Okay. Do you have a contingency plan if Epcor can't provide water?
We have a backup plan if they cannot provide water, which is a very lengthy process. But with that being said, we are quite far along with Epcor. We've had multiple hiccups. It's been incredibly frustrating, stressful, et cetera. But to be clear, the system that we're building is going to be pretty much encapsulating our own parcel. We're basically building a well for ourselves. And there will be some city tie-ins that we're working with into Epcor's system, et cetera, now. But in general, it's been quite the process, but we're finally getting along now. We're having a master utility agreement pending soon. We just received comments back from our first iteration, so we're very hopeful that this is going to bring us over the hump there.
Okay, yeah, very good. Yeah, there's, obviously with all of the water woes, we, we're trying to find this, this balance of having housing alternatives for folks. So whether that's single-family residential, a project like this, apartment homes, and the like, with the, the water resources that we have for our service area. And certainly, this isn't in our water service area. So I just want to make sure that you, you understand, which sounds like you do, what you're dealing with with Epcor.
We are budgeted to go down 500 feet to find water.
Okay.
At least, so.
Excellent. Are there other questions from members of the council? Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I, I need to be re-familiarized with this project. So some of them will be rentals, some of them will be purchased. If they purchase them, is there like an association's fee or what is, like, there'll be a base rate for them to?
Exactly. They'll be paying lot rent.
Any idea what that looks like?
It's around $675.
And, um, I don't even want to go down this road, but will this area, will they be able to do like VRBOs out here? Can somebody purchase it and rent it out as vacation rentals in this area?
We'll have very specific rules around that. Typically, we're thinking of allowing that, but we're going to be very cognizant of what that looks like in our community.
And price range for these?
Price range for the homes, we own a resort in Bullhead City, Arizona. We're selling homes there for $65,000.
$65,000?
$65,000. They're park models that are 399 square feet. But the typical manufactured home that we're selling in this community is anywhere between 900 square feet to 1,100 square feet, and we're targeting around 80,000 on average.
80,000?
Yep. Depending on, depending on specifications, customizations, it could go up to 120,000, but we're really providing the most affordable form of housing in the country.
So they can purchase it for about 120,000, pay the lot fee, what'd you say, 600?
Yep, 675 on average.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this, uh, these kinds of homes are all over the country with this particular model, and it's a great model, especially for entry level. As Councilmember Lynn said, I would be worried about the short-term rentals. Hopefully, you'll put that into your HOA CCNRs that, that you either limit them or not allow them. I have had a citizen reach out, and I don't know if he's here today, I didn't notice, worried about the stop sign as the traffic is right now on Victoria Farms Road as it comes out to Chenoweth. They live in the manufactured home on the other side of the storage unit. They're concerned because there's already a lot of traffic on Chenoweth. I know Mr. Morris said there was a traffic survey, I think that's the term you used, was a traffic study done, and is there any thought to making that a three-way stop sign right there to make it easier for all of that traffic to get out on Chenoweth Road?
We did have a full traffic study done.
Just bring up the whole team.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there was a traffic study done. It was a full traffic impact analysis. That study has been submitted to ADOT and approved by ADOT, so we have taken care of 95 in Chenoweth for ADOT's half. We looked at the intersection as what we would call a two-way stop control, where the Lowe's driveway and the driveway southbound for Victoria Farms are stopped currently. That seems to operate, even given the additional development that we added in to the study, within acceptable ranges. We have not looked at a four-way stop. That could be something that could be considered. Really, the only movement that is going to experience any delay is the northbound lefts coming out of the Lowe's, because with the additional traffic coming southbound to westbound and eastbound and northbound, that's the heaviest movement, so that northbound left would be competing with all of that traffic. But really, there was only five or six cars coming out of that driveway, so very minimal impacts from this one.
Right now, but once you put all these homes in there, that's going to impact it a heck of a lot more, and all of the trash trucks come down that road right there daily.
Yeah, and that was including this development, yes.
Okay, so that'll just be something we'll have to continue to look at.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Lynn, so you said in your study that did, and take into account the, the additional building of this facility. So took our current use of, of the roadways plus this development?
Yes, so city staff sent us four additional developments that were in the area. We included that traffic as background, the existing traffic out there, and then we also added this development's traffic onto that. So a lot of the upcoming development is self-storage, RV, boat storage, which really has a very low traffic impact. And even with this development layered on top of that, we, things were operating within acceptable levels.
Okay. Yeah, Luke, could you with the mouse, maybe show me how, how are they getting out, in and out of this development?
All right, they're, propose the main entrance from here onto, onto Victoria Farms Road is the main entrance. So coming in would be on Highway 95 and then turn eastbound on Chenoweth Drive, and then turn north onto Victoria Farms, and then there's the main entrance here off Victoria Farms. For those that maybe are going to be over in the eastern area, it probably would make sense for them to go up Victoria Farms Road, come north, and then come east on Victoria Farms Road to the secondary access for here. And their traffic study looked at all those, those driveways coming in and out of the project, and it reviewed that in the current state and then with like the five-year growth plan. And so in five years, it still was showing to operate well at the intersection of Chenoweth and Victoria Farms Road, and the entrances and exits out of the development were working well, so.
Okay, thank you. And then, did the traffic study put like a right-hand bump-out turn lane for when you turn onto Victoria Farms Road so you're not holding up the traffic behind?
That's something that would be more detailed when we go to the development portion of it, but yes, that's something they're certainly aware of, and it's, looks like it's something that will be included, just given the way that the road works there at that point. It's going to, it, it's kind of a complicated issue, but yes, that's something we'll certainly look at, and it will be examined during the development portion of the property.
Okay, yeah, that would be important. I've had several folks reach out to me as well, but they go somewhere else in the summer, and so they're not here for this hearing. But I think that's important, that we take into consideration, bringing that type of traffic out to that area.
Do a deeper dive when they're going to develop the property as far as off-site improvements, including lane widening, curb gutter sidewalks, those sorts of things.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
And I just want to, I think we talked about this before. I just want to be clear, refresh my memory. In one of the previous slides a little farther on, there's a lot of open spaces and a lot of stuff like that. That's all going to be maintained by the, the management company or the HOA that you guys set up, right?
Yep, that's going to be contained by the actual community owner.
The community owner, as part of the leased land and all those.
Exactly. A part of the amenities that we provide back to the community.
And so there will be management of this onsite.
Oh, yes.
So if there are problems with VRBOs, and that's almost kind of going to be your issue.
That's on us.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, another question I have is on the stacked parking. I guess, I don't know, I can't remember the word they choose, but stacked parking, it seems common from what I'm being told, that that's what happens in these types of developments. Obviously, it's not allowed in our code now, so none of our current manufactured home developments allow for, for this?
There may be some out there that were grandfathered illegal, non-conforming, I wouldn't be surprised, but our current parking standards don't, doesn't allow end-to-end parking.
Okay. And staff doesn't see a concern with end-to-end parking?
Oh, not in this case. This is a fairly standard for a lot of manufactured home parks. I think the idea is to reduce the square footage of the lot overall, and if you're adding additional five or six, excuse me, nine or 10 feet of width for an additional car, that makes the lot overall wider, and then so you may be able to get fewer lots on the property. So it makes good sense from a development standpoint. It's just unfortunately, our parking code doesn't have this mechanism for end-to-end parking. That's the only reason they're asking for the planned development portion in exception.
No, I, I understand that component, and I'm actually pleasantly surprised with some of the prices you quoted, that it does seem to be something that could be a great product for, for many of our residents. So are there any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please just make way to the podium, state your name for the record.
I'm at Lowe's pretty much every day. I have a small contracting company, and I'm sure all of us have been there. If you exit, you have to exit basically from the north end of Lowe's. There we go, sir, thank you. Everybody is going to exit onto what street? Chenoweth. I don't know, but when I'm there throughout the day, sometimes two or three times a day, 500, 800 vehicles, cars are at Lowe's and exit, every one of them has to go and wait until it's clear to make their left-hand turn westbound. I'm just wondering, has that kind of traffic been put into, has Lowe's been consulted and that kind of traffic count been put into the traffic equation for this impact study? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Sir, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, so we counted the intersection of the Lowe's driveway, which would be Victoria Farms and Chenoweth, and that was included within the traffic impact study.
So it was included?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Again, this item is coming for us, it's a rezon request to allow the property to be developed in the way that was described on the screen. It's coming to us with a seven to zero vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it also is going to allow stacked parking. I keep forgetting the name of the, end-to-end parking. Any questions or comments or a motion?
Mayor motion?
Please, Vice Mayor.
Ready for this?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 23-1309 for a planned development rezone for 6590, 6600, and 6700, Chenoweth Drive, and 1800 and 2,000, Victoria Farms Road, for manufactured home RMH Agricultural Preservation AP and industrial I to public lands and facilities P1 to accommodate a water well and storage and to manufactured home planned development RMH/PD district to allow end-to-end parking spaces as shown in Exhibit A with the following conditions: The developer shall accept the requirements received from ADOT's review of the traffic analysis as approved by the city, and the developer shall enter into and record an access and drainage easement agreement with the property owner of abutting APN 120-03-064 to allow the access and drainage encroachments on that property prior to development.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 7.12, which is adopt ordinance number 23-1310, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for 2205, Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-045, a 30-acre portion of Plan Development Number 07-00200005, from light industrial planned development district to industrial district. Mr. Tinaman.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to take this opportunity, you have a new face up here on the dais. This is Trevor Kearns. He's been with the city since 2019. He's been with Development Services for about a year and a half. He's been presenting zoning cases to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he's here tonight to present for the first time to you guys, and we picked a doozy of an agenda for him. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Trevor.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Tinaman, and welcome, Mr. Kearns. The reason I was kind of going slow and reading the description is I'm just kind of waiting for my colleagues to get back to give the applicant a fair, a fair hearing here. So if you just wait a second, Mr. Kearns, and we'll have our colleagues back, and we can start the presentation. Yeah, all right, we'll go ahead and get it started. Welcome, Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Access to the property is from Chenoweth Drive to Victoria Farms Road. The subject property is approximately 30 acres and currently has some shipping containers placed on it. It also includes a large concrete slab that is to be used as a roller hockey rink. The surrounding properties are largely undeveloped, except for outdoor storage and a storage unit complex currently under construction. The properties to the west, north, and south are zoned light industrial. The properties to the east are zoned light industrial planned development and industrial. The property to the southeast is zoned light industrial planned development. In 2007, the city council approved a planned development which included 160 acres along Victoria Farms Road for the Pinnacle RV Resort, now known as Havasu RV Resort. The subject property is located within the originally, originally approved Havasu RV Resort. The subject property was to be part of Phase Two of the proposed RV Resort to include approximately 400 RV lots. The new owners of the subject property request to remove the parcel from the planned development and rezon the property to an industrial designation. To date, 59 acres of the originally approved 120-acre RV Resort planned development have been removed from the PD and rezoned to light industrial or industrial. The property is currently zoned light industrial planned development, which does not allow development outside the approved planned development. Therefore, the applicant is asking to rezon the property to industrial for future use. The property is served by a private ingress/egress easement. The future development of the property will require the appropriate The future development of the property will require the appropriate design review and building permits. Any law alterations or splits will require review and approval by city staff. No objections to the requests received from any other reviewing agencies or departments. This property owner has been sent a code violation letter for three different violations. Illegal use of the property, illegal grading, and illegal storage containers. This rezon request is to fix violation number one, illegal use of property. Once this is rezoned, they can then work on getting compliance with the other two violations. If the rezon does not get approved, they will have to remove the storage containers and still address the illegal grading. The planning commission heard this request at its May third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and the motion to approve was denied by a vote of three to four. The dissenting voters did not state the reason they voted to deny the request. This is all if for this is all for staff's presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Are there any questions from members of the council on this item? Then I believe the applicants here, do you have a presentation or would like to make some comments?
Yes. Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Patrick Van Zan, and I'm with the law firm Sax Tierney. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant Copperleaf Holdings LLC, whose principals wanted to be here, but they had a prior engagement, longstanding engagement out of state. I think I'm going to start with some public comments that were made at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This matter came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May third, and the commission voted not to recommend that the city council rezon the property as requested by Copperleaf. Having reviewed the video of that meeting, Copperleaf believes the commission vote was the product primarily of some misleading statements made to the commission during public comment. And I'm here to address some of those misleading statements. The neighboring parcel owner, Mr. Wild, stated to the commission that Copperleaf had violated the terms of a private grant of easement that was is for the benefit of his parcel by placing shipping containers in that easement. This isn't accurate. The easement is sixty feet wide. Only the eastern thirty feet of that easement benefits and leads to Mr. Wild's property. In fact, he had that thirty foot easement surveyed, and he put up manhole precast sections marking it off. And I provided those pictures in a letter to you all. The point is, the eastern thirty foot segment leading to Mr. Wild's property has never been blocked by shipping containers. The western thirty feet of the easement is for the benefit of and leads to the northwestern portion, which is the applicant's property. So any shipping containers put on that portion of the easement do not affect Mr. Wild. Next, Mr. Wild stated that he cannot get his trucks onto his property because the there's a gate and there are no trespassing signs that block his easement. But what he didn't tell the commission was that that gate is never locked, never has never has been locked. We have cameras installed that show him routinely coming and going as he pleases. What's notable is he never gets out and recloses the gate that is unlocked that he opens, and that gate's important. So is so are the no trespassing signs because there's a lot of trespassing, theft, vandalism. People go out there and drink. They're doing donuts. One one person was doing donuts on the cement slab out there and broke their axle and thought that we should pay for that because it wasn't fit for their donuts on the cement slab. So there's a reason for that gate, and it and notably, he has gates on his parcel when you get there, and it doesn't bother him to get out and move those. So in this application, we seek the same relief from the plan development designation that other parcels have already been granted. And respectfully, while we don't, we're not blocking Mr. Wild's access to the easement, we believe that denying this request based on that private dispute would violate ordinance fourteen oh, one, ten, which prohibits the city from enforcing private agreements through its zoning decisions. So we ask that you approve the rezoning, and if rezoned, the applicant intends to provide much needed semi tractor trailer parking and storage there. They'll they intend to work with the city, get all the permitting they need, and do what they need to do to move forward. I can answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one. See, it was mentioned in the staff report that there's current violations or there were violations on the property. Was that just they weren't aware of them, or how did that occur? And how can we trust that that's not going to be something going forward?
They genuinely did did not understand that putting movable shipping containers would be deemed a violation, would essentially development and building. It's a mistake. Everything stopped, and they tend to work with city and staff going forward.
And then what what about the grading? I understood through the staff report, there was grading that was done illegally?
Well, that was to put down the shipping containers, to make it level for the shipping containers. It was we think not significant, but it stopped, and it won't continue until they work with the staff to get the permits they need and work together.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the council?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have some history for you, and I think you're going to like it. All that property out there was the original mine for most of the cement that you see in this city. We mined most of that, that concrete hockey ring Campbell's poured in. So I'm very aware of all the property out there. That is the wild, wild west out there is what we call it. That's what my husband calls it. And the whole story about the egress being chained off, he drove me there. He showed me everything. We took a look at your property. You do have some code violations, as you spoke of. You have some at risk, or you have some, not even that. It sounds like you didn't pull a permit for grading. I'm sure we can take care of this, but this sounds like this is a zoning change, nothing more. This is a zoning change from industry, I mean, planned development, which a lot of people did. We would mine out that property, and it's a big hole, and it's in a flood zone for a reason. It's in a flood zone because it makes great sand and gravel for concrete. All right. After that, then it goes up for sale, and developers come in there, and they try to build a lot of stuff on these things, but because they're in a flood zone, and they're in a hole, and and the final costs or because of Epcor water systems, they tend to fail. But what we do need in this city, what we absolutely need in this city, and every city needs it, we need a dump. We need trash. As you know, next to you, you have propane tanks, which are Hobdade's propane tanks. They bought this property with intent to use it for industrial, but your part portion of it still has this planned PD over it, and this is all you're asking to remove. As for the, if you have a dispute with your neighbor blocking your egress, it sounds to me that's a civil matter. So all of this sounds like a bunch of noise to me, and it doesn't seem like we're dealing back where we're at. We need farther down from there is Bulldog Disposal. And if you guys want to go look at that, that's not pretty either. It's just stacks and stacks and stacks of metal and scrap, and it's not pretty, but it's what we need, you know? Communities need this, and they do usually lay out industrial, open yards without a lot of development in these mines that have been mined because it's not the best land, but it's out in the desert, and you can get five acres at a time. So I will be voting yes for you to move forward because I think there's a lot of noise going on here, and we're not just dialing down what really needs to be done. And I'm sure that the city will, the codes and the violations will be taken care of accordingly. That's my opinion.
There any other comments or questions for Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Luke, are they in violation, code violation now?
Yes, they are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so they have three, three violations, the illegal use of the property, the illegal grading, and the illegal storage containers. The zoning will take care of the first one, the illegal use of the property, and that will allow them to correct the the other two violations.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. I'm just so used to talking to Luke. It sounds to me like you're in violation, but you're asking the city to rezon your property, so you're not going to be in violation anymore. And that's not why we rezon property. So.
As I said, that my client says it was an honest mistake. They didn't understand that putting down shipping containers would be deemed development or building, and they they graded to have a level place to set those.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
So they put these shipping containers there as a business. They're charging people to store them there.
I don't know that they are right now, but that's the that's the intent. And they also intend to provide semi tractor trailer parking there, which I understand there's a big shortage of within the city and.
But it's as a business. They're going to charge money and make money. They're running it as a business.
Eventually, they will. I can't. I I don't know if they're charging right now.
Mayor, I just want to say the services that they're offering for industrial in this community is viable. It's a valuable service for us, and it sounds like they made a mistake. It should not be a planned development. If it was removed of the other, you know, all the other portions were removed, and you see what's there across the street is another mine. It's quote unquote construction. I could tell you all the names. And if you drive up and down that road, it should be industrial, open storages, and I think that they're doing a service for our community. We need these kind of services in our cities. Not everything is pretty. Not all business is pretty.
Well, it is. I put in my letter, if you saw, there's something interesting that that plan development overlay was not there for a period of time. It was not on the city's GIS mapping system. After my client purchased the property, they called up and said, well, what's the story? It's not on the GIS mapping system. It's been removed. Is the what's the status of the plan development? And within a couple of days, it suddenly reappeared back on the GIS mapping system. So I I understand there's some issue here, it's some issues here, but it shouldn't. It's the only parcel, I think, with the planned development designation. It's 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 unreasonable to deny that to them over what appears to maybe be the reasons for doing that tonight. I don't think it would be an appropriate denial of a rezoning.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I'm really conflicted with this because I can I can understand where Councilmember Coke is coming from. But I can understand where Councilmember Campbell says the need for this is it's they did it before they were able to do it. So you don't know right now if what's on there, if that's just storage, or if they're charging people to put those there. You don't know that.
I have to tell you, I don't know if they're charging for that right now.
So we don't know if that's even his personal.
I can tell you that they placed those there, but I don't know if they're charging for use of them.
On those two vehicles that I can see there, you can't tell me if those are his.
Oh, I think they probably are, but I don't know if they're charging customers to do anything there right now. I just don't.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
My concern is not aesthetics. My concern is they were told that this isn't the proper use, and so now they come back to us, and if any, if you want to run your business, you have to have a business license. You have to go through the proper channels. You can't just say, oh, I didn't know. We know that. That's common knowledge. If you're going to run a business, you got to have a business license. You got to do things appropriately. If I want to put a wall in my yard, if I want to do anything on my property, I have to get a permit. Well, you can't just claim ignorance and be excused. I I get it. I get. I agree with you. It's totally a need in the community, but do it the right way. That's just my thought, and the trailers are still there, even though they're in violation. They didn't even attempt to move them. So I mean, that's all I was saying. I wasn't saying it wasn't a need. I'm just saying, and I don't care about the aesthetics of it. I just saying the way that they went about it and saying that they just didn't know. I mean, I don't know. Doesn't sound like a very good argument.
May I say this? If if the council is not inclined to approve this rezoning, can we table it, not vote on it now, work with city staff to do something and bring this back sooner than six months from now?
Yeah, what, Mr. Kearns, if 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 this is rezoned tonight, are they now conforming at that point, or are the storage units, are the shipping containers still out of compliance?
So they would get rid of the PD designation for the property. It would make the property, as of right now, it's useless. So getting rid of the PD would make it usable. They can then come in and submit permits for grading and to develop the property per whatever city code it requires.
Okay. So they've already graded it. So they just get a permit to say, then we go through and say, yeah, it looks good. They whatever you did?
It'll go through the the review process for just like any other grading permit.
Okay. Yeah, so then the the action in front of us tonight, then, is if we do rezon this as presented, now they come into compliance?
For just the zoning, they still have two other code violations they need to bring into compliance as well.
And those two code violations are the permit for the.
The grading, yes, and the illegal storage containers.
Okay. But they they can't ask for the storage units to come into compliance until the rezon happens, or?
Correct, because if if this doesn't pass, then the property is unusable, unless it's for the original PD, which is too old.
Okay.
So the storage containers could be a possibility with the proper permitting and engineering and everything that would require anybody else. But as of right now, with the P current PD, they can't do anything.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm inclined to, I mean, the general plan supports industrial in this area. That's what the general plan identifies for this. This is an island of of a PD. Everything else is already, they've been taken out of the PD according to the zoning map that was provided as part of this product or as this item. So I I'm looking at, from my perspective, I'm looking at a zoning issue. I I think the code violation is a separate discussion. I mean, so from a zoning perspective, this makes sense. It's supported by the general plan. The rest of the neighboring areas are industrial, and I think that I would move forward with that. Now, there is a code violation that does need to be addressed somehow, so I would just need assurance from from you, sir, and your client, that they're going to work diligently and expedient with the city to bring those items forward, knowing you can't do it unless we have action tonight, to kind of come into compliance. So.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I I can support that. I mean, I don't. I don't think there's any benefit of kicking the can down the road during this. If if from a general plan perspective, this is already supported from there, and we're looking at this just from a zoning perspective, strictly zoning, it complies, and and there's no reason why we wouldn't change that zoning. Now, because there seems to be personality conflicts with neighboring businesses and and otherwise, and then negligence, I mean, on behalf of your client, to not use the property in a conforming way, we can address that. If you can assure us that that's going to happen, I don't see an issue with that. That's my perspective.
Mayor, no offense, like he said, this is kind of unique that this PD would be over this development. Like, if you're from out of town and you're looking for old industrial area, you do look for places like this. And if you look over here, and you've got a propane tanks all stacked up and cars stacked to the ceiling, I bet if we all snuck through there, we'll probably find a bunch of code violations if we were looking for them. So all I'm saying is I don't think that this was all intentional and that they're building a house without a permit, and I think this was an actual mistake. And I can see, I have no skin in the game here. We haven't been on that property forever. But what I'm trying to say is I think this was a mistake, and I think that there's, he has a good business model moving forward if that's the one he's going to do, and I think we could really use that in that area. And that might help with the workforce housing around there, too. That might get more employees. Who knows?
Yeah, but the action, if we change it to an industrial, all industrial uses can be used. I mean, we're rezoning, so we're staying focused on rezon. We're getting into Louise a little bit about what it would be, but they'll be able to do all industrial things, which is supported by the surrounding properties. Any other comments or feedback before we open the public hearing?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Moses?
No, I too could support industrial going into this area. I'm really disappointed with how this is done. This is not how you do business. I'm more curious from the staff's point of view, like, what are the repercussions for somebody to come out and do illegal grading and illegal uses and stuff like that? What do we just ask for gaining compliance? Is are there? I mean, I just don't want, I mean, essentially, if they get off scot-free, this is now a thing where anybody might think that they can go and, oh, just say, I didn't know. And now, and then you just you circumvent the entire process that most people know about.
Sure. Thanks for the question. We'll just go through the code enforcement process. So we contact them, and ultimately, when you do construction without a permit, you get, you call it a red tag, and you get double feed. So that's that process. I'm not going to lie to you. This is going to be a challenge for them. This is in a floodplain. They've graded in a floodplain already, so they're going to have to go through some extensive engineering as far as the civil work goes. The storage containers on a commercial property, you can have a nonpermitted structure, a hundred and twenty square feet or less. These are probably eight by twenty-four or something like that. So so they're they're going to need a permit. You can only have one hundred and twenty square foot structure. Our fire sprinkler ordinance would go into effect. This is basically what they're trying to do here is create a storage unit complex using shipping containers. So instead of using a metal building like we usually see these storage projects, they're using storage containers. So. projects, they're using storage containers. So they're going to have to, the building code has provisions for storage containers, structural requirements on them, drainage underneath them. So the building codes do address them, but they require permit, engineering, grading, fire sprinklers, off-site improvements, all the stuff a normal development would require.
So there's going to be, I mean, there's repercussions. They got double feed, and, and they got their slap in the hand, and now we can all move forward.
Exactly. Right now, our policy is kind of, if you have one or two storage containers out here, we understand. If you have your generators, things like that, we can, we can deal with that, especially in an industrial area that's on 30 acres or 10 acres. But when you're lining, I think they have 21 on site. And from what we know, and I've talked to some people, they are renting these out as storage units. So there are people out there that have their personal belongings in them. So we've talked to the, to the owners and told them that that needs to cease immediately. I talked to them last week, I believe it was, and they were understanding, and we're moving forward, just like we would at any other project, so. Hope that answers your question.
I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you.
Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue I have, not that it's should or shouldn't be industrial, I can agree with that. It's the process. We have processes that are required. And they didn't follow those processes. They just used the property for whatever they wanted to. They found out that they were not in compliance. There is some other ramifications. Now they want us to rezone it to try to bring them into compliance. The person that's here that's representing them doesn't know that if, whether or not they're already renting these out, which is another violation. Mr. Tuneman has told us that, yes, they are renting them out. So the fact is, I don't trust what the property owner says they're going to do. So the reason I'm against this right now is fix the problems, then come back to us the legal way. This went to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning denied it. We have that group for a reason. And to not follow their restrictions or their, what they think is the right way to do things, I think is wrong. And I'm really disappointed in the applicant, not you, sir, because you're just a representative. They know that what they're doing is illegal. They've been told what they're doing is illegal, and they're trying, it appears, in my opinion, they're trying to find a workaround. So my thing is, go become legal, then come back and talk to us and do it the right way, just like everybody else. We require them to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane.
Mayor, the only thing that I see wrong with that decision is they can't make it right. So they're going to get double fined, because there is a process in place if you do something wrong. There's a process in place to do it right, and there's a process in place when you do it wrong. And it makes no sense to me. If there's a PD on it, other than probably removing your storage containers, then the property is invaluable. That's it. So, but I think through the process, this is just like a hiccup in the industrial world of the wild, wild west, and if we start snooping around over there, you're going to find a lot of violations. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't or whichever, but I agree with what you're saying, Councilmember Lane. I wish everybody would do their due diligence on all those pieces of property out there, but I guarantee you, if they did, most of them didn't even know that they were in a flood zone as bad as they are. You know, I mean, again, that's due diligence. That's our fault. But I'm just trying to say, I think we should just let the process go. So I will be a yes vote on zoning it, just removing the PD off. That's all we're asking in an industrial storage unit.
And it's moving from light industrial to industrial?
Right.
So it is changing.
That's where it needs to be. Yeah.
But it is, it is changing it. So the, I appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor Lane, about process and where that comes in. It sounds like from Mr. Tuneman's comments that if this is the same business model or business plan that your clients are looking to do, they're going to maybe need to reconsider what their business plan is, because it doesn't look like it's going to be compliant. But nonetheless, I'm looking at this from, from moving it to an industrial parcel. It makes sense. It's supported by the general plan to go into industrial. This business plan might not work, because it's not going to be in our code, and they're going to have to come into compliance, whatever that is, but they would have all of the entitlements that industrial zoned land would allow. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's any public comments on this item. If so, if you'd just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
So my name's John Wooster. Thank you very much for listening to me today, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and council members.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I missed your name.
John Wooster.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I kind of understand the forgive a little bit and work through it, but we're talking not one violation, we're talking several. The grading, the grading is an issue with drainage. Those storage containers are being rented. They are actually in a right-of-way easement. The gate that's there is a right-of-way. There should be no gate at all. Now. Okay, well.
Hey, you're addressing the council.
Yes. There should really be no gate at all. I think the fire marshal was out there, actually looked at it. Should be no gate. The, if we're going to forgive those 20, 30 containers, whatever it is, that they're renting out now, and forgive the, the grading among, I forget what other instances there were. What's next? I agree with the industrial part of it, but I recommend, I urge that the council deny it and then have them correct these items and then bring it back. That's all I got to say.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I don't think we're, we're trying to forgive anything or forgive. I mean, this is one of the processes. If you want to do industrial land, you, the general plan makes sense for it to be industrial land.
This is supposed to be a professional developer. And he's going to tell me that he just didn't understand? I don't believe it.
Yeah. Yeah, the property will have to come into conformance, if it's not, conformance is not, which it's not. So, yes.
Hello, Mayor and council again. So David Diaz, I'm the vice chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was one of the no votes on this, and I'll tell you why. Because I just felt, and it was, I think it was proven tonight again, that the applicant was being dishonest. He was asked, "What is your plan to do with this?" "Oh, I'm just going to leave it blank. I'm not doing any grading at all. I'm just leaving it blank, not putting anything on it." And then another planning and zoning commissioner said, "Well, you've already, you've already graded. You've already got containers on there." And I think he got like deer in the headlights. He caught him, you know? And then, and you're advertising, I'm surprised the gentleman here didn't know, but he's advertising these things in the white sheet for rent. And there really shouldn't be a gate there. I went out there myself and looked at it. So I just think the proper thing to do would be to rectify it and then go through the right processes. Because if you do it for one person, then the next person that comes up who wants to do it, you have, you have to do it. Why didn't you do it for me? You did it for them. But I just think from the very beginning, the applicant was dishonest. I thought, I guess there's even a court thing going on right now, legal thing going on. Let them finish that first and then bring it back to the council. And the, and the planning and zoning. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Can I speak in?
Uh, yeah, you can. Yes.
I just want to address the easement issue. First of all, a private agreement, a private easement, there's nothing that says you can't have an unlocked gate there so that people driving by thinking, "I'd like to go drink and do donuts somewhere," aren't discouraged. It's just false. It's not true. You absolutely can have a gate there. You can't lock it. But to say that you have to get out and push a gate open, that's not a big deal, and it's there for a good reason. So again, the, whatever dispute there might be going on with that easement, respectfully, should have absolutely nothing to do with the decision here. In fact, I think it violates the zoning code if your decision is predicated on trying to enforce a private easement agreement. It's right in the, right in the ordinances. That's it.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the council during this public hearing? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. I'll kind of throw this out to whoever on staff wants to grab, Ms. Gary, Mr. Tuneman, Mr. Kearns. What is the easiest way from the city's perspective to get this property into compliance? So is it to not address this item today and have them come into compliance and come back so that they don't have to go through the six-month process again? Is it to move to, to rezone this property? What's the easiest way to make this happen?
So I'll start by saying that the city can't enforce a private covenant or ingress-egress easement. But getting rid of the PD would be the easiest process to bring it into compliance. Because even if you remove the PD today, that's not saying that he can even, or the applicant can even have this use for this property. He'll still have to go through pre-application meeting, design review, have engineered grading plans approved by Public Works. Everything's going to be looked at. They'll have double fees. The, it's already been graded, so you can't put it back the way it was. You still need a permit to do that. So this way, remove the PD now, will allow the city to move forward and bring them into compliance.
Thank you. So the most expedient action in front of us is to approve this rezone, moving, removing the PD, removing it from light industrial to industrial, which is the action that we're hearing today. Yes, okay. All right, are there other questions from members?
I have not. So Trevor, if he, if, if he were to go through, we were to go through that process and do that, and then you said he has to go through all the permitting processes and everything, is he going to have to remove all those trailers in the process? I mean, do those need to leave, the shipping containers?
Well, he'll have to go through grading.
Because he wouldn't then have the proper permits to have those.
He cannot use them.
So what, there's stuff in them now?
Then that, if that's in there, then they need to be.
But the containers can stay. They just can't have stuff in them?
No. They still would need to be permitted or removed.
Yeah, Mr. Tuneman?
This actually came up for a reinspection today with the code enforcement's 30-day checkup list. So we're waiting to kind of see what happens here, to see how we're going to move forward with the code enforcement process, which, if this happens tonight, we'll still move forward with that code enforcement process. And part of that process is the use needs to cease immediately. They need to be emptied, and then we'll determine as staff, if we're comfortable enough with those there while they're getting their design, or if we're not. And we probably aren't with 21 on site, but we can accommodate them, maybe like I said, with what we do with other properties, one or two, if they need them for their personal storage. But yes, we will pursue to remove those in the meantime while we're going through the permitting process.
If, if we approve it, that's what you'll do.
If you do not approve it, we will make everything that is in violation of the zoning PD removed. Yes. And then we will still pursue the grading, because they will have to get engineered grading plans to, to determine, A, what they did is correct, or B, what they need to do to correct what they did without a permit.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. To the applicant, you're hearing this discussion. I don't know if you can speak on behalf of your client for their commitment to get this property into compliance?
I can, Mayor. They have absolutely 100%, 100% committed to work with council, with the staff to get the permits they needed, to go engineering, whatever is needed, to come into compliance. They're willing to do. They're committed to doing so that they can use this property. Right now, legally, all they can do is have an RV park there because of the planned development overlay.
Yeah. And based on the discussion from what I've heard, and I'm not trying to make business decisions for your client, it doesn't sound like what they're trying to do is going to be able to happen, and they're committed to finding alternative uses within industrial zoning?
If they don't get industrial?
No, with industrial zoning.
Absolutely. It's essentially worthless land that when they bought, the GIS mapping system did not have a planned development overlay on it, and it suddenly reappeared.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and if we could, and Mr. Tuneman, if you could.
Thank you. I'd like to address the GIS thing. That is just a tool for the public. You have to actually click on a button that says, "I agree to these terms," and the terms is, "This is for reference only." So I just wanted to address that as well.
Do you know, was this, is that a correct statement that was on there and it wasn't, and, or, I mean, is that something that we must know about?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Who manages the GIS? Is that us, or is that the county?
Yeah, it's our GIS.
It's our GIS, but it's on our website, and we have a disclaimer on there that says, "This is for reference only." There's a big, long statement that says, "I agree to these terms," so just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Tuneman?
So we, the GIS is our, is our mapping. So if you go search maps on the city's website, you'll see a lot of, a lot of maps that are included, different layers for trash pickup, or zoning, or water service area. I think we have 60, 70, 80 different layers that are on there. It's managed by the city. From time to time, they'll do maintenance. They'll take it down, put, add new layers and work on that, and work on the, on the system. So from time to time, as Mr. Tuneman indicated, it might be down for a short period of time. That's not, the zoning didn't change, or the information within the system didn't change, but updates occur and we do our best to give information to the public.
Yeah, thank you. All right, yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
No, I have a question for the applicant. Yes, if I may. You mentioned that the, that your client is 100% committed, but yet they haven't emptied out those containers. This is, today was reinspection day. They hadn't done anything. It doesn't sound to me like they're really committed. It's, it sounds to me like they're trying to do a workaround, and that just doesn't make sense to me.
They're trying to 100% work with the city to come into compliance and be able to use the property as it should be going forward, similar to the surrounding areas. I don't know if they were working with the city to see what happened today first before they emptied them. I don't, I didn't even know they're not emptied. I didn't know there was anything in them. I didn't.
Yeah, it doesn't, that just doesn't make sense to me, because they can't use it for that purpose anyway. So it just doesn't make sense to me. It's, I understand what you're saying. The applicant isn't here. You're trying to answer the questions for him. But, and this has nothing to do with easement or anything else. It has to do with the process that we have for me. So, thank you.
Mayor, a question. Wasn't there discussion of possibly having just, I think you said it earlier, that they were just going to park semis on there and rent space for semis, which are truck drivers, because they can't park their trucks at their yards? I don't know. Where did I hear that?
That was me. That's.
That's where I.
That's the intended use.
Right.
Shipping containers and semi-parking, semi-tractor trailer parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Tuneman, have they done anything to come into compliance? Anything, like, you said today was, have they done anything in the last 30 days?
Well, I know that they, they stopped doing everything that they were doing when they were told they weren't in compliance, but I don't, I can't tell you what particularly they've done, if they've emptied out any containers. I don't know.
Can I ask our staff member?
Thank you for the question. Today, Denise, our code enforcement officer, brought me an advertisement that showed they were still advertising these for rent.
Thank you.
As of today.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I completely support changing this to industrial. I hope the applicant can find a way forward. But I'm, I agree with Councilman Lane. It doesn't seem like they're trying to work with staff. It's trying to, starts to seem like they're trying to circumvent staff. I want to see them come back and make it all right, and then let's get our plan going moving forward. That would be my vote moving. I can make that motion now if.
If I may, Ms. Gary, what would the process be so they don't have to go back through the six-month process? So would we just table it and they can come back?
Yeah, if we could table it, that would, that would help them in that respect. But yeah, if there's a denial on it, then they will have to wait.
Yeah. Yeah. So from what I'm hearing, I think tabling seems to be the best alternative based on the comments, and we can see how the property owner can come into compliance, working with code enforcement and development services to get those components done, and then we can come back before council to have the rezone hearing. Is that what?
Are there any, are there any issues? We haven't discussed this. We don't.
So what I'm hearing is, is that, what I'm envisioning is these storage containers get removed from the property. We, they hire a civil engineer to at least stress the grading that's occurred, so we're comfortable moving forward with that floodplain-type issue, and then we can bring the item back for, for your consideration at that time.
Yes, or the alternative is we go for a vote, and if it fails, then they have to start over the entire process over, which would be about a six-month timeframe. So those are really the two options we have in front of us tonight.
Or the third one would be you approve the rezone tonight, and you let city staff and code enforcement work on this issue with the client through that process. If they don't come into compliance, then that could be a lengthy process through the enforcement of the violation section of our code 1.12 and the court system and all of. the enforcement of the violation section of our code, one point one two, and the court system and all of that. So we do have that avenue that we can go down, um, if need be.
And then that's, that third option seems to be the recommendation before us tonight. Is that's the recommendation of staff?
That is the recommendation.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, Councilwoman Moses?
I could agree with tabling it. It seems like a reasonable compromise. And if you'd like, I can make that motion.
There, uh, the staff recommendation though would be that third option, approve this rezone and let them go through the process for code enforcement. Uh, and if they don't come into compliance, then they would follow the, the code as code enforcement, uh, goes on. I still stand that the general plan supports it. Um, but I, if we're, if it can't pass, then tabling it seems to be, uh, what's the second best alternative.
I'm for tabling.
Okay, you want to make that a motion?
Could, real quickly, could that just be tabled until we remove the storage units? And then let's not have them spend a bunch of money on civil engineering to get the grading permits? Because if it's gonna have a PD on it forever, or it, it's just, it's worthless. Yeah, it's a worthless piece of property right now, completely worthless.
Yeah, the tabling, uh, option would be more expedient to come back before us, but they would have to come into full compliance. So they would have to do the engineering, as I understand, uh, Mr. Treneman's comments.
We could maybe, uh, talk with the, our engineering group about the floodplain issue and maybe get, um, some sort of a statement from an engineer, um, perspective on what they've done versus what the requirements are for the flood, floodplain and maybe justify something like that. So we don't have to get into full blown grading plans, but we can get like a engineered grading statement, something like that. Um, and then move forward with that, remove the containers, get some sort of analysis from an engineer. Um, and then, uh, we could bring it back at that point.
One more question for the attorney, please, and then I'd love to call the question, let you do. He's here for a zone, zoning change on a piece of property that's worthless. Are we in possibly any legal, is there any legal things here that we just hunker down and say we don't want to do it?
Executive session.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't want to.
I just asked her a question.
Legal advice. I, what I can say is that somebody can sue us at any time for any reason. So anybody can sue us at any time for any reason. So.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to hear.
Is it possible? Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to hear your.
Whether there's grounds for that or like, or a strong argument that, that's.
We don't know. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And it is important that, uh, that's just an opinion that the property's worthless. Like, that's not a statement on behalf of the city. That's just an opinion. Yeah. So, yeah. All right, uh, is there any, uh, is there a motion pending? Okay.
I move to table ordinance number twenty-three dash one three one zero. Do I? Do I need to? Read the whole thing?
No, I, you don't need to read the whole thing, but you, there has to be some clarity. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion and we've talked about what the tabling means and what, but we need you to tell us what your expectations are for the tabling. Cause there, I don't know that there's a consensus. And so if you're just saying to table it, then all it does is table it, and you're not giving direction back to staff of what your expectation is to bring it back. So I don't want to make it, I'm not trying to make it more difficult, but you're probably gonna have to be a little more specific on, on what the parameters are of the tabling.
So we would move to table it to allow the applicant to bring it up to code compliance and work with, uh, you know, development services to remove all shipping containers, have a statement from the, uh, land engineer, you know, engineers, civil engineers, and then bring it back to council to, for, uh, consideration on zoning change. I think I just did.
Ms. Williams, did you pick that up?
Sorry, Kelly.
Yeah, so.
I moved, I moved a table ordinance number twenty-three dash one three one zero, allowing the applicant to bring all property to code and, and remove all violations and getting a statement from the civil engineer, um, and, and then to bring back for a further council meeting for consideration on zoning.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Um, so I will just say, uh, uh, is there an opportunity that we can approve this, uh, zoning with, uh, based on conditional that it doesn't go into effect until the property comes into compliance? No.
I would not advise you to do that. When you're rezoning it, it's not a PD, it's a rezone. There, there's no way to, to flag the conditions. So when you're rezoning it without a PD, no conditions.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Yeah, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
All right, item seven point one three is adopt resolution number twenty-three, uh, dash thirty-six seventy-seven, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Mojave County Flood Control District for flood control purposes. Good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Where am I? Oh, there he goes. Okay. Uh, yep. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the adoption of, uh, resolution number twenty-three, uh, dash three six seven seven, approving IGA with Mojave County Flood District. This is an annual, uh, IGA, uh, for the distribution of flood control district funds to the city. Uh, with this, uh, approval, it will provide two point eight five one million dollars for the city's flood control program, of which we're currently outlining the construction of Daytona Wash, construction of the Havasu Bay Wash Six, and construction of, uh, wash crossing improvements for El Dorado and Queens Bay crossings. Those are all teed up, uh, to be using funds, uh, out of the flood control. Uh, the, also it funds the engineering, design and construction team, and as you know, our city wash maintenance program. This is a quick snapshot, um, uh, rough exhibit of the Daytona Wash section from Sneed Drive down to Oak, which is currently at, uh, ninety percent design. We're expecting a hundred percent bid docs here at the, uh, end of the month. And, uh, looking towards construction and bid advertising and, and construction here in the fall. Uh, same with Havasu Bay Wash. We've got, uh, those a hundred percent bid documents going to be prepared by the end of this month with, uh, planning for construction, uh, this fall. This quick snapshot of the El Dorado Crossing, right now it's an at-grade crossing, uh, causing, uh, some, uh, not only some emergency backups when it's flooding, uh, but also you'll see, um, Dolphin Drive, uh, there just to the south of the picture. Uh, there is a sight distance issue there. I think I brought that up when we brought it to council for design. We'll be correcting that sight distance issue for that crossing. And then the third one, uh, or the, uh, Queens Bay Crossing, that, that crossing there in that cul-de-sac, it floods because of backup downstream in the channel, uh, to the bottom of the screen. So it gets ponding water sitting in that crossing for long periods of time, and there has been cars stuck in there. So we're gonna raise that grade up, uh, and so that the drainage can flow through and make improvements there. I'm open for any questions. Like I said, it's an annual, uh, event here to accept these flood control, um, funds. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Wolf? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number two-three dash three-six seven seven, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Mojave County Flood Control District for flood control purposes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item seven point one four is award the bid for the construction contract to Pioneer Earth Movers, Inc. For the London Bridge Road pavement rehabilitation project. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, bringing good news regarding, uh, some hot mix asphalt here in the city. Uh, we've, um, uh, let the, uh, project out for London Bridge Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project. The limits to those project, uh, start at the bottom of the screen, uh, at, uh, Highway ninety-five, moving through London Bridge Road towards the north, um, through the S curves, I call them, and then up north to Pallaverty. That's a milling fill type project we're anticipating. Um, you're, should be familiar with, um, the last time we really implemented a large project like this in, uh, on McCulloch, where we actually have a rotor milling machine taking a few inches off of the surface and then replacing the surface with hot mix. Uh, as part of the project at the Highway ninety-five, there will be, uh, the first thirty days after the award is gonna be processing, uh, Pioneer, processing the ADOT encroachment permit at the ninety-five. So we'll have that first thirty days involved and probably just traffic control plan approvals. Um, as part of the project, I just wanted some, some notes. The project was advanced forward. You remember last year I brought the priority paving array to council for presentation? This was not one of the top priority projects, although it was on the list. Uh, we moved it forward primarily because ADOT has a safety striping and bike lane project proposed to go on, uh, on London Bridge Road in September. So we made a commitment to get the project out so that we could get ahead of that ADOT project and not end up having to repave a project that was recently striped, basically. Um, the engineering plans, in order to expedite the project and get it out, those plans and specs were, uh, prepared in-house, uh, to, um, get through the procurement process a little quicker. Um, the project does consist of rotor milling and overly about eight point eight miles of London Bridge Road, uh, and includes some, uh, water valve cans, approximately sixty water valve cans need to be adjusted and sewer manhole, uh, rims also. On May twenty-fourth, one bid was submitted by Pioneer Earth Movers and was opened and publicly read. The engineer's estimate for the project was one point six one four hundred and thirty dollars. And, uh, the low bid from Pioneer was one point, uh, one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars, uh, considerably less. Uh, the contract time, although stated in the bid documents, was ninety days. Uh, we've gonna work within that ninety days to, uh, come up with a project schedule, work with Pioneer, uh, for their ADOT encroachment permit, as well as scheduling, coordinating and minimizing the business closures along the way. I had insurance, assurances and reviewed with, uh, Pioneer, uh, this afternoon, uh, that it looked like hot mix would actually be, uh, happening on the corridor about the end of August, early September this year. Uh, we anticipate completion by September twenty-three, which should dovetail right in where ADOT wants to get mobilized to restripe the whole corridor from London Bridge, from Highway ninety-five north to the city limits at, uh, Ranker, I believe is the name of that. Open for any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Could you go back to one slide for me? So we're expecting to be done by September of twenty-three, but it's ninety days and they need thirty days for their ADOT encroachment? That's all built into that ninety days then?
It depends on the actual date of award. So we can, we can, uh, we can award the, um, construction contract and then work, uh, with the contractor to get the, um, the encroachment permit. Uh, so there will be, uh, some work in there, but I, we do anticipate that September would be the close date. We'd be finished. Um, how that ninety days kind of slides in there, we just want to make sure it be done by September and, uh, ask Pioneer to work with us on that schedule.
Okay. And you talked about the, the hot, um, the hot patch or?
Hot mix.
Hot mix. Is that with the Highway ninety-five? Is that what you're talking about?
That's the same what they're gonna do to Highway ninety-five. They're planning on rotor milling and repaving Highway ninety-five. Uh, we should be in and out before they come in, uh, to any, any work on the ninety-five.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the council for Mr. Wolf? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would, uh, anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to, uh, council. Uh, so there was, uh, an alternative bid, uh, in our council communication, uh, that, uh, what is being recommended, recommended is under what the engineer's estimate was at one point one million, seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, but they did a, a base, um, bid plus the alternate one, which would, it would have done concrete on the S, um, the S curves, I guess we'll call it, which would, uh, would be two thousand, two million dollars, uh, and eighty-seven thousand. So it would be over budget by about six hundred thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollars or so. Uh, but that's there. I just wanted to mention that, uh, as part of that, uh, conversation. Uh, but again, the recommendation is coming back to do it in asphalt from London, uh, from Highway ninety-five to one bidder with two different, with a base bid plus an alternate bid. Yeah.
We, yeah, we had an alternate in to do concrete pavement in lieu of asphalt pavement through that first section. Um, and we wanted to truly see what that cost comparison might be, uh, in this particular case. And because of this corridor being rather unique, uh, asphalt did come in lower.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would, would there be, what, what's the benefit of doing the second alternative? Like, is for maintenance later? Like, is there a benefit to go if we went this, the second route? Like, long-term benefit?
We didn't do a cost benefit analysis based on the cost, but, um, typically that concrete pavement, uh, may have a longer life to it. Um, but that, uh, longer life, uh, would, uh, be a, that's the cost benefit. And we didn't do a cost benefit analysis. We looked at direct costs. Our, um, we wanted to see what that concrete cost was. We still have other projects coming with concrete alternative to them, uh, in the near future. In fact, the industrial streets, uh, that's in the priority array. That does have a concrete, there is no alternative on that particular one, uh, for that project. But we are gonna go with concrete on, uh, portion of that future project that we're planning. We didn't do the cost benefit on this one. We felt that, uh, from public works standpoint and the council's, um, uh, direction for hot mix and getting this, these projects out and getting money spent on, uh, miles of roadway is where we kind of wanted to focus at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and that, that's actually understandable. It's only nearly double the, the cost to go concrete here. Yeah, Councilwoman Moses?
Askeded for it to have the S's in concrete? The, the city did?
We bid it, we bid it so that it would, that first section through the S curves, uh, would either be concrete pavement or it was gonna be asphalt pavement. And, uh, we bid them against each other, so to speak, as an alternative, so we could pick one or the other. And, uh, because of the extra cost on this one was rather high, uh, we, we recommending to go with the asphalt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember, all right.
No, no!
No, uh, Mr. Knutson.
Uh, Mr. Wolf, could you explain what an ad alternate is and, and why we, uh, why we do that, why that makes sense in terms of flexibility?
We thought it'd be smart, smart with all, in the S curves where you, right now we have, uh, some pavement that's pushing as, as you go through the S curves, it, when it gets hot, that asphalt tends to push up to the side and cause a, a roughness. So we wanted to look at that S, that concrete cost. Uh, in this case, uh, by milling and filling that section, we felt we could get a bigger bang for our buck and spend that money on other corridors that are important in the city.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I can, because, um, the way the city procures these types of bids, right? We, we don't just, uh, get phone calls or look at, uh, online pricing or whatever. We, we, uh, we get the, the cost when. We get the cost when we receive the bid. So a large part will have a request a bid with and then add alternates, maybe alternate one, alternate two. Then at that point, we get all the bid and the pricing back, and then city can make a decision on which avenue to go. You know, if there's a curving or concrete or asphalt or these types of things, too. So it's a typical approach, just to get as much information as possible, so we can make, be flexible and make an informed decision based when we have all the numbers at hand, if you will.
All right. I believe we, did we open the public hearing on this?
No.
No? Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to award the base bid for the London Bridge Road pavement rehabilitation project be awarded to Pioneer Earthmovers, Inc. in the amount of $1,176,115.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion passes with five council members voting yes and one council member recuse.
Thank you.
May I make one statement? How dare you guys? Asphalt in June, July, and August? Thank you very much.
All right. We'll go ahead and do 7.15, which is a ward bid to ASR Construction Group LLC for booster station 5A improvements. Mr. Tealy? Good evening.
Sorry, I can't drive with my right hand. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Item before us is a ward of bid for Booster Station 5A Improvement Project. So this project was previously included in the capital improvement program that was actually approved earlier this evening as part of prioritized upgrades to the water system. Back in November of 2021, council ordered an agreement to NCS engineers for the design of this improvement project. This is a photo of the existing pump station. As you can see, the equipment's tad antiquated. The project improvements included new booster pumps with variable frequency drives, new valves and piping for the pump station installation, pump controls and instruments, replacement of the existing electrical and skater system with new systems, including a new emergency generator and automatic transfer switch should power outages occur. And so basically, what that means is if a power outage occurs, the new improvements will automatically kick on the generator versus our staff having to go up and like manually pull a rope to start it. Replace existing hydro pneumatic tank with two new tanks to improve redundancy. We receive final design in February of 2023. Notice the bid was published March 7. Bids were opened April 25, and a low bid was received from ASR Construction Group in the amount of $2,299,921. So our recommendation is to award the bid to ASR Construction Group LLC in the amount of $2,299,920 for the construction of Booster Station 5A Improvement Project. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Tealy? Where is Booster 5A? Like, general neighborhood?
So it's clear up the hill near the intersection of Cailloua and Bison.
Okay.
So kind of the southeast side of town.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions from members of the council? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion, questions, or motion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to award the bid to, for the Booster Station 5A Improvement Projects to ASR Construction Group LLC in the amount of $2,299,921.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Then item 7.16 is award of professional services agreement to NCS engineers for construction management services for the Booster Station 5A Improvement Project. Mr. Tealy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is a word of contract for construction management services for Booster Station 5A Improvement Project to NCS engineers who were our designers. So the purpose of the contract is to assist city staff with construction management for this project. We're fortunate enough to have staff with expertise to assist with this project and give us a cost savings. I know we spend money investing in our crews, and that's very helpful for us to try and save money on projects like this. We negotiated a scope and fee with NCS. Their services include supplemental review, response to RFIs, assist with weekly progress meetings, and then perform special code, perform special and code-related inspections, as well as permit applications and assist with certificates of completion with the contractor. That, all type questions?
Excellent. So this is a companion items. The item we just approved for the professional services agreement. Are there any questions for Mr. Tealy from members of the council?
How many bids were brought in on this one?
So we just went directly back to NCS and negotiated a scope and fee. Since they were already familiar with the project, they did the design.
Okay.
Yeah, with professional services agreement, we can just go specifically to a consultant for assistance. We don't have to do bids or RFPs or anything like that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from members of the council? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah. I move to award the professional service agreement to NCS engineers for the construction management services for Booster Station 5A Improvement Project in the amount of $73,820.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. I was just trying to do some real quick math on the professional service agreement. It's actually fairly low. It's like 3%. I mean, it's a really well-negotiated agreement. So thank you for that. Generally, we see those coming in anywhere from 10, 8 to 12%, somewhere in that range. So thank you. All right. Do we have a motion, and we have a second? Motion from Councilmember Moses, second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right, folks. We have made it to the end. Shocking. Yeah. That now concludes our public hearings. All right. But we do still have some more orders of business. But those are our public hearings. So the next up is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the City Council with items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. As we indicated earlier, there's light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green indicates you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. Again, it's within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, and your comments should be addressed directly to the City Council. You don't have to sign up for calls to the public, but we did have a citizen do so. So we'll start with Mr. Ron Thomas, and then we'll open it up to anyone else that would like to address the council. Good evening, and welcome. I don't know how long does evening last? Is it good night? I don't know. Yeah.
My bedtime's like 8:30, okay? Anyway, I'm a combat veteran in Vietnam. I was deputy sheriff in Orange County. I moved to Lake Havasu six years ago because I'm tired of crime, violence, so on. I love it here. I really do. I have a beautiful home. In fact, you were there five years ago at a charity event. Miss Arizona and whatever was there. But it's been brought to my attention, then I started investigating of some serious crime going on in this city. And I was hoping that the chief might be here, but I do see a representative from the police department. Don't know if he's paying attention.
The chief's right behind you. You got to watch it. Yeah.
Wrong one, sir. My apologies. My apologies. This has to do with the skate park. And for years now, there have been a lot of incidents at the skate park. And I understand it's for our children. Well, I got to tell you, there aren't children there. There are teenage gangs there. You have 11 cameras. Currently, there's a park host who's just moved into there, which is good. The broken emergency call button has an out-of-service sign. It's been there for months and months and months. That needs to be fixed. Currently, there was an incident where an 11-year-old boy, and I have this on a short video even, because it went out on Facebook and the parents notified me, where he was being held by two individuals, two older teenage individuals, while another one took his skateboard right into his face as a kid covered his face and then hit him again. Then these children drove off in the pickup truck. So they're at least 17 years old. I have several of them here. Youth... This is according, oh, this is according to the city that when the kids use the park, they have a sense of ownership and good self-policing. Well, good self-policing means when they don't like something, they'll take action. They're beating the other kids up. Children are afraid to go there to the skate park. I have several friends who have kids, pre-teens, and even teenagers. They are afraid to go to the skate park because of all the violence. The chief, I'm sure, knows, and the investigators are on top of this. I see officers flying there all the time for calls of service. I wonder if those 11 cameras are working. This just goes through several incidents, and I won't get into them, of what's happening down there. This is all from the internet. We need to do something about it. We need to make this place safe. This is Lake Havasu. We don't need our own children, which aren't mine, but we don't need our children collectively to be having gangs. Oh, one other thing that's always bothered me, I've only been here six years. We close the park so the teens can have a whole week at our park. And yet, it's us, the taxpayers, that pay for the park, the maintenance for the park, everything about the park. And we don't get to go to it, so the teens can go there and do what? But yet, we can't go to the park anymore. I understand we need things for our teens to do. I really get that. I do. We need to do something about the violence that is going on continually at that skate park. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during call to the public?
Hi, I'm Joan Nazero. Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, I have a different perspective on the police department. I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of you for supporting our police department. After reviewing the budget and looking at the fact that we are giving them money over this, which a lot of municipalities are not doing in our country, I want to thank you for doing that. To recruit and keep good officers, they have to know that they are appreciated and they receive the funds that they need. Now, no entity could ever pay what these people